Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, June 7th. We are coming to you tonight for a hybrid format from the Savage Center and school committee member Joan Giblin is coming with us remotely. I'm going to ask everyone that is in attendance to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business is the approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes, four sets of minutes in our packets this evening. The business meeting minutes from May 17th and May 31st, as well as the executive agenda, executive session minutes from May 17th and May 31st. Are there any questions on the minutes this evening? A move by Teresa, is there a second? A second by David. Because we are hybrid, I will need to do roll call vote. So I will start with our remote. Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, so that passes five to zero. Second order of business is correspondence. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Please not have a chair.
Great. And then lastly, not lastly, by far. Next item on the list is our warrant report. So this week I signed warrants in the amount of $1,849,130 and 2 cents, $5,274.28, $173,792.80, $1,249,958.84, $21,067.96, $78,060.79, $85,878.19, and $4,146.70 for a grand total of $3,467,309.58. Are there any questions on the warrant report this evening? Great. So moving right along to our next item on the agenda is public comment. As a reminder to the community, public comment can be accessed during our meetings. You can register for public comment in two ways. You can call the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting to register, to pre-register. You can also register in person at the meeting by signing in when you arrive. So this evening, so this evening we have five people pre-registered for public comment. Just as a reminder to those for public comment, I think you were all provided with copies of our public comment policy. Public comment is kept to three minutes per person and the entire public comment segment will be no longer than 30 minutes so that we can move on with our business meeting. So with that, I'll declare public comment open at 7:13. And the first, and I believe the first three on our list would like to join together at the ta- no, one at a time? Okay. We walked back on that. Okay, so the first, the first person that we have registered for public comment is Mr. George Yusevich.
To the chair, members of the school committee, Dr. Thompson. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be here before you. Tonight you will hear many reasons why the middle school was named for Dr. Philip Oldham Copley, an esteemed educator in our community, and it was well deserved. To work with Dr. Copley was both a privilege and an honor. He was a mentor, role model, colleague, and in later years became a close personal friend. Other superintendents would turn to him to seek advice and counsel on various educational issues. Dr. Copley even proved to be a visionary advocating and supporting the hiring of minority staff when he was superintendent. He had a presence you knew when he was in your building. He was revered by his teachers and administrators who worked with him in the Norwood Public Schools. I was hired by Dr. Copley in 1965. With his help and advice, I became a better teacher and administrator. I proudly served 50 years at Norwood High School and was principal when our new building was built 12 years ago. I mention that because I think it's a salient point relative to the Copley Middle School. We built the high school, it was a brand new, state-of-the-art facility. The campus would be set back. It was still the school on the hill, located at the same address, 245 Nickel Street. There was never any discussion to change the name. It was and continues to be Norwood High School. The new middle school campus will remain in South Norwood on a new footprint, the same address on Morse Hill, 1315 Washington Street. There should be no discussion to change the name. It is and should continue to be Copley Middle School. We are all here tonight to ask you, our elected school committee members, to listen to your constituents and reconsider your previous vote. Dr. Copley's memory and legacy should remain alive by keeping the name of the new building, Copley Middle School. It is the right thing for you to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yusevich. Next on our list is Mr. Mark Joseph.
Hi.
Oh, Helen's going to do it. Helen will come, sure.
I'm sorry, Mr. Yusevich corrected me. He was my first.
So Mr. Mark Joseph and Ms. Helen Reagan.
It's very nerve-wracking now on this side of the table. Good evening. My name is Mark Joseph. I'm a lifelong Norwood resident and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. And I want to thank you for your tireless service. I was a member of the Norwood School Committee in 2004. At that time, we were changing from the junior high to a middle school model. We unanimously voted to name the school the Dr. Philip O. Copley Middle School. The school was formally dedicated in 2004 with Dr. Copley and his family in attendance. If you would please refer to the four documents that provided you in your folder, I'll be referring to those. The first one is the official ballot question on the override to approve the new Copley Middle School project. The second one is from the town manager, the superintendent, the Norwood Middle School Building Committee thanking the voters for approving the new Copley Middle School project. The third document, which is from the Norwood Public Schools' own website, has the project branded as "The New Copley Middle School Project." And finally, from the Norwood Middle School Building Committee, there is a public invitation next Tuesday, June 13th, 2023, for the Copley Middle School groundbreaking ceremony. Clearly these show that the name is the Copley Middle School. We would like to know when was there an issue that needed to put this to a vote? We would also like to know why was this decision made? Was this because you were unaware of Dr. Copley and his lasting impact on the Norwood Public Schools? What is very disturbing is the fact that children would be allowed to change the name of a school, which the public has already voted on, especially a project of this magnitude. What I ask is that all of you please reflect on what is presented tonight, keep the Copley Middle School, the name as is, out of respect for the legacy of Dr. Copley, his family, and the voters. I would also like to ask that the children attending the middle school be made aware of the history of Dr. Copley and all he did for their school system. This is an important piece of Norwood history that we should not erase from the books nor the building. Again, thank you for your time and your service. I'd like to know what you do with Helen. Helen Copley Reagan, and that's Dr. Copley's niece. Thank you, Helen.
Thank you, Mark. Hi, I'm Helen Reagan and I live at 14 North Street and I'm the niece of Dr. Philip O. Copley. And I'm here to represent the Copley family. After reading the article on Norwood Patch, our family was shocked and saddened to hear that the superintendent and the school committee were asking for suggestions for new names for the new school. The article also stated "be part of history." My thinking is why not teach the history as to why the school was dedicated to Dr. Philip O. Copley? And just for your information, and I have heard others mention, that Philip O. Copley's, his middle name stands for Oldham. Everyone in the town says Oldham, but it's really Oldham. And the Oldham School is named after his grandfather. And as of now, there are over 750 signatures on a petition to keep the school the same name. Our family, please, we ask you to honor and respect our family member, his legacy, and keep the school the name that it was dedicated to in his honor, Dr. Philip O. Copley. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan, and thank you, Mr. Joseph. Okay, next on our list is Ernie Krasikowski. I always say that wrong, Ernie, I'm sorry. Krasikowski.
Thank you for having us. See you tonight. My name is Ernie Krasikowski and I am speaking as a board member of the Norwood High School Alumni Association and as a resident. I would like to share a little history of who Dr. Copley was and why we want to maintain the name, the Copley Middle School. Dr. Copley was a 1936 Norwood High School graduate who lived in the town and raised his family here. As superintendent for 18 years, he oversaw the school system during a time of tremendous growth in our town. During his tenure as superintendent, he opened the Oldham and Wellatt Elementary Schools, oversaw three major expansions, the Boch, the Cleveland, and the high school, which basically doubled the size of the old high school. In a 24-hour period, a fire destroyed the junior high and three grades woke up the next morning with no school to go to. He had to implement double sessions for the students with all the logistic problems that would go along with that. He saw the building and opening of two brand-new junior highs basically at the same time. In one summer, he closed two more elementary schools, the Winslow and the Shattuck, and combined them into another new elementary school, the Dialed School. Due to overcrowding at the high school, he instituted the open campus concept where if students didn't have a class, they could leave the school property. You must remember that the drinking age was 18 back then, which brought yet its own set of potential problems. Even with all of this, the students of Norwood continued to receive a first-class education and graduating classes were consistently over 500 students. Buildings, parks, and other things have been named after people by past town boards to honor and remember those who contributed to the betterment of the town and so that their names and accomplishments would not be forgotten. Let's not erase the part of our town's history. Instead, let's teach the students who these people were and why the buildings are named for them. Having students being part of the process is a wonderful idea. There are many ways that they can be involved and contribute to the new school. In my opinion, choosing the name of the school is not one of them. I don't think that you will find a person more worthy than Philip Copley, so we urge you to reconsider your position and continue to call it the Copley Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krasikowski. Senator Wright, second time. Next on our preregistration is Ms. Sarah Quinn.
Hi, I'm Sarah Quinn. I think most of you thought you got rid of me when my youngest graduated, but here I am. I don't have a lot of eloquent remarks to add based on what's already been said tonight, but I do want to present the petition that was referenced earlier. As residents of the town of Norwood, we are respectfully asking the renaming of the Copley Middle School be taken off the agenda. We believe the name of the middle school should be preserved as the Dr. Philip O. Copley Middle School as it was dedicated in his honor. It is important to the community that we continue to honor his legacy, a legacy of service, and deep commitment to the Norwood Public Schools. And this petition has over 750 signatures that was gathered over the last five days, were gathered over the last five days. The one piece I did prepare to talk about was the family aspect, and I know that was touched on already by Dr. Copley's niece. Certainly not as big a deal as having a building named after you, but there is a ball field in this town that was named after my grandfather, who was an educator who passed away. And it is a point of pride in my family. When my kids were old enough to go to that park, we pointed to the rock and talked about him. When my sons played baseball, we talked about it. And I talked about it so much, I finally got papers to change the name on the schedule to Gormley Field instead of Wilson Street. Similarly, there was a painting of my grandfather that was in the high school office for a long time. It had been commissioned by students, I believe, after he passed away. And it was a point of pride to me when I attended the high school. And then when I later worked in the high school, it felt good to know that, you know, people knew my grandfather, who I never met, and thought highly enough of him to sort of maintain his legacy in some small form. When the new high school was built, the painting disappeared. And that was equally emotional for my, my father in particular, and my aunt were sort of disturbed by that because this was a big deal to them and now it was missing. We have found it, it was in a closet, and it's been returned to my family. But I just want you to think about the lasting implications of a name. It's not just words on a building. It really does mean something to the people who have made the decision and the people who were impacted by the decision, like the Copley family. So I respectfully request that you keep the name, the Copley. And I will leave this petition with the names here for you, so you can read it at your leisure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Okay. At this time, that concludes all of the people who are pre-registered. No one had signed in, but I do want to check one more time because we do have some more time left if anybody else would like to speak during the public forum. So with that, at 7:27, I will declare public forum closed. I want to thank all the speakers who came this evening. I will pause for a moment because I know there'll be a little bit of shifting on the way out. Thank you. Bye. Thanks for coming. Bye, Ernie. Bye. Bye, Meg. Thank you. Bye-bye. I'm just waiting for the door to close because it'll be too, I'm just gonna wait for the door to close. Okay. Oh, you bringing it up anyway?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So moving on with the business meeting, we have several appearances this evening. First on our, on our agenda is our Student Advisory Council, here to give us their quarterly and final update and recommendations for next year's Student Advisory Council. So welcome Ms. Kira O'Donnell, Ms. Kiki Della, no, yes, Kiki, right? I was like, I don't want to get her nickname wrong. And Ms. Sophia Tuma. Are you guys gonna come up as well? Come on up. Come up and get recognized. You guys did a lot of work this year.
All right, hello, this is our final quarterly report for the year. Next slide, please. This list was included in past meetings, but just a quick reminder of all of our members and what we worked on this year. Next slide, please.
Are you guys, sorry?
Oops, sorry. Gotta talk a lot of the time.
Next one.
Next one to the crowd.
As we've done in the past, the Student Advisory Council members went with their respective principals to gather information on the schools, specifically any of the events within academic activities. This time around, there's one general student feedback section. From meeting with a couple members of the school committee during Windsock during the school, we decided to focus on asking about school start times, ideas for activity additions, and any general negatives or positives students who are at their school. Some members this quarter were able to meet with students, as students, groups of students, and offer student feedback from principals speaking with their student councils. And one of us, that when we get to that section, we're predominantly receiving feedback from the elementary schools. Since this is the first year, kind of, we ran into some unexpected difficulty gathering information during the busy end of year season as compared to kind of the rest of the prior. For that reason, our Copley reps weren't able to meet with the principals or principal or students due to scheduling. So there's no Copley section, but in its place are a few slides on future directions because all this trial and error can be used to help us figure out what to do better in the fall. While there's no middle school section, one great thing we've heard through word of mouth is that there were several student groups that entered into the Mass Spent Hub showcase, which is very exciting and a good one. So that deserves to be recognized. Next slide, please. So as always, I'll start with elementary space. Next slide, please. In the world of academic highlights, it was great to hear about the many reading initiatives taking place throughout the district in this time of year. At the Cleveland, there's the Battle of Picture Books, which is a bracket-style competition between different grade levels. Next week, they also have Draw Everything and Read, where students can invite loved ones to read with them outside. Right now, the Prescott has a similar reading challenge going on and walk-to-read for students as well. Reading really does seem to be a theme right now, as there's also Poem in Your Project Day, where students and staff brought in poems that they read to one another. Recently, there was also a collaboration between the high school and the Cleveland, where EYC or the Environmental Youth Coalition came to the Cleveland and did globally-minded projects with students through the Solar Program. And to continue with the reading theme, a few schools had read-a-thons. At the Cleveland, they had mystery readers come in each day to surprise students, for example, representatives from the police or fire departments. And during that, there was a PTO-sponsored book swap as well. Next slide, please. I rep that interviewed at the Oldham shared that there's been a focus on getting students involved with STEM, specifically computer science this year, with coding and library class. One really impressive academic highlight is at the Prescott this year, where a student actually made it to the statewide level of the Scripps-Spellings Bee, and the school plans to make it an annual event after this year's success. Many schools have also hosted Spent Nights for families over the past few months. At the Prescott specifically, they brought in community partners, including the Robotics Club at the high school, the Norwood Trails Committee, and the Sustainability Commission. And for all elementary schools, the students are finished up with their NCAS testing as well. For activities, there was recently the Fine Arts Festival that brought together all the schools in the district. In the gym, there were a lot of elementary school pieces of art on display for the families to see. Many celebration events have been held, for example, the Black History Month laser show assembly at Cleveland, and the St. Patrick's Day celebration that brought in step dancers from the community, and our very own finance director, in fact, he performed at the high school as well. Schools such as the Boch in Cleveland held student-run dining nights, where students took orders, brought food out, sometimes wore big mustaches around the cafeterias. And many Oldham students also recently took a trip to the high school and got to try out TV production with NCM members. So in class, the high school students got to watch the videos they produced as well on the news. At the Cleveland, persistent students and dance a thon, a reason for an outdoor sensory area as well. And to celebrate academic acceptance month, the school also had a reading of "All My Stripes," a little display for all students to participate in making and see kind of the performance on that display. And recently, the Prescott hosted Matt Brown and Boston Blains Foundations, as well as Norwood firefighters for an assembly in Happy Habits and Inte-Bolay. For more activities, schools such as the Prescott are planning to further incorporate sheng bright assemblies into the beginning of the school year and the fall to help the student anxiety getting back into the swing of things in the beginning of the school year. Over the past few months, many students participated in various honors ensembles for band, orchestra, and chorus. Recently, several schools had their end-of-year concerts for band and orchestra as well, which were hosted at the Copley Mill School. At the Cleveland, there are Boston Children's Hospital reps coming in to do a summer safety assembly for students before the end of the school year. At the Boch, there is the recent Spring Fling Lual. Many students held, many schools held Memorial Day ceremonies, where students could sing and play their instruments. Right now, there are many field trips going on, including IMCA ropes courses, zoos, visits to the Concord Museum, Gillette Stadium for a STEM day, the New England Aquarium, and many more. There are also end-of-year events specifically for fifth graders, such as Step Up Day to the Copley, Tenure Field Day, School Field Days, and the Day of Ceremony, and a celebration like here. Recently, there are senior walks as well at all of the Norwood elementary schools where principal seniors could visit current students and see their old teachers, which is a lot of fun. And at the Cleveland, their student council reps plan to re-plant flower boxes around the school, which my brother insisted I couldn't forget to mention because we need to do some self-promo and things like this. And next up is the high school. For academic highlights, students are going to turn four. The final day is June 21st. Seniors are already all done. Underclassmen have taken NCAS and many juniors are taking or retaking senior-based tests like the SAT or ACT. AP tests were completed throughout May and the results for that come out early July. And then course selection is going to be finalized soon, so then students will ideally receive finalized drafts of their courses for next year in the following week. And recently, the Honor Bankreat was held to celebrate juniors and seniors for their academics, and that was held at different points. Last week, there was also Class Day, which was a reward and scholarship event for seniors. Coming up is a similar underclassman awards event to celebrate underclassmen's academic success. And recently, the first-ever healthcare innovation cohort that partnered with Harvard Med celebrated their final day of those seniors. And for those going to a trade or straight to the workforce, there's a career banquet as well for those students. Recently, graduation was a classing day, so there are a lot of celebration events going on. And also notably, Norwood High School started a committee this year to look at increased support for first-year students. So 15 staff members are meeting regularly and will continue to look at different aspects of student life and the school holders over the next 10 months. Next slide, please. For activities, this year at We're Able Break, there were three successful international trips with over 60 Norwood high school students participating in total. Students from Turkey, France, England, Ireland, and Wales. The French Exchange Program recently wrapped up as well, and all students are going to go back conceivably. Pops Night was a music event that invited the community to the high school gym, and there were choral and instrumental performances there. There was also the awarding of many senior scholarships. And notably, the high school actually received the Best Communities for Music Education Award this year, which is very exciting. And there are also, there was also the Fine Arts Festival, so that got elementary, middle school involved, but also the high school too. So there are choir and theater performances, as well as instrumental performances, and there's a signing of artwork as well. And related to fine arts, many students succeeded in MICA and MATHGU performances this year as well. For more activities, the high school also held World Language and Culture Night. Spring sports wrapped up regular seasons by the end of May. The awards ceremony was held for that as well, and many students won MVP and coaches awards. The tournament season is starting the first week of June, and with seniors gone, the high school is welcoming incoming ninth graders on June 12th. So must-ain mentors that are current juniors will be in the school. Next slide, please. This is kind of a new section this time around, but as mentioned earlier, from meeting with a couple members of the school committee during Windsock, we decided to focus on asking about school start times, ideas for activity additions, and any general negatives or positives the students know is for their school. For the start time, for the start time at the elementary schools, which is actually earlier, whether they're later at the high school, it was kind of funny hearing the responses, but some Cleveland but also the high school too, so there are choir and theater performances, as well as instrumental performances, and there's a flying of artwork as well. And related to fine arts, many students succeeded in MICA and METG performances this year as well. For more activities, the high school also held World Language and Culture Night. Spring sports wrapped up regular seasons by the end of May. The awards ceremony was held for that as well, and many students won MVP and coaches awards. The tournament season is starting the first week of June, and with seniors gone, the high school is welcoming incoming ninth graders on June 12th. So must aim mentors that are current juniors to lead the way in the school. This is kind of a new section this time around, but as mentioned earlier, from meeting with a couple of members of the school committee during Windsock, we decided to focus on asking about school start times, ideas for activity additions, and any general negatives or positives the students know is good for school. For the start time, for the start time at the elementary schools, which is actually earlier, rather than later at high school, it was kind of funny hearing the responses, but some Cleveland and Prescott students in that they didn't even realize there was a time change at all. Some students pointed out preferring to get home earlier from school. It was more free time for them in the afternoon. And actually, it was kind of nice, the members of that, a few students reported feeling happier with more after-school time, as there's less of a time constraint for them, and so there are fewer stresses and pressures to complete homework quickly and squeezing all their activities after school. Some other students noted that there's not enough recess through the day, because at some schools, before-school recess was eliminated this year, with school starting earlier in the day. Next slide please. At the high school level, the start time was pushed slightly later, so many students involved in after-school sports talked about missing, having some time until the end of the school day, and their activities to decompress. And then many felt more physically and emotionally tired than usual this year, since they don't have that time between anymore. As expected, many other students that didn't necessarily do sports are grateful for a little bit of extra sleep. However, some students argue that the later end of school day means they end up finishing their homework later, so there's no real sleep benefit anyway. Next slide please. There wasn't a ton of feedback for adding clubs and activities, but some students pointed out adding an after-school sports tournament club or a club. For general feedback, there's a lot from the elementary schools, so I'll just create it all off. But some pieces of feedback are definitely more relevant than others, but it was just what the kids had to say. One nice one to start off with is that at the Prescott, the kids said that they don't perceive there to be boring at all, and they feel very safe there. At the Botch, some students noted feeling that there are too many students in each classroom, which can sometimes be overwhelming when they're training. At the Botch, students talked about the cafeteria running out of certain lunches, and not all students received what they ordered in the morning. Another really nice one that I liked was at the Cleveland, students reported their teachers and people that asked for help when they needed it. And at the Prescott and the Cleveland, there are positive reflections on activities they're currently doing, like Literature Fish Balls, which I've never heard of before, but that's at the Prescott. The Spelling Bee, the Day of Coding, the different field trips they're going on, and one Cleveland student pointed out the Senior Block as something they liked as well. Next slide please. For more general feedback, one student at the Cleveland pointed out that he and his friends wished that classes were a little bit more challenging, as sometimes they had trouble paying attention. At the Botch and Prescott, they're like, it's the temperature during the warmer months. At Cleveland, some students noted that the water fountains in bathrooms go out of order frequently. And at all the schools, it was pointed out that students really love the special summer schedule, which is nice. The Botch students mentioned that they wish the class time was longer, as they don't feel there's enough time to receive the instruction and then get super-involved in what they're about to do. And also, there are school surveys in the whole district throughout the year, but as you mentioned at the Botch pointed out, that some of the questions were a little bit confusing and maybe not at an elementary reading level. So while this is just one student, it's definitely important to think about for accuracy reasons, we're trying to get feedback from elementary students. Finally, we have future directions and areas of improvement for the Student Advisory Council. And maybe not all of this will happen next year, but it's definitely some things we want to start to think about for the new council and try to figure out what this group needs, pretty much. For now, next slide please. Most importantly of all is just making sure that all Student Advisory Council members in the future understand their roles and responsibilities, and are committed to completing them throughout the year. This was tricky this year, as going into it, none of us were really sure what we were doing, so we had to try things out along the way, and we're still trying things. But the role is now included as part of all vice presidents' roles in the expectation sheet for student council when you run for office. Also, there's a better understanding now of what the role entails, so hopefully everyone who runs will be on board to do it as well. For the liaison specifically, I highly recommend attending the massive conference at the beginning of the year, I think that Dr. Thompson said. Also, many of the people there were kind of going above and beyond, doing so much more than I ever could. It helped contextualize the role for me, I think, and I got to see what it eventually could maybe become, or like what we could work toward. In our wood meetings, we also talked about eventually maybe connecting the liaison to kind of the longer-term student council agenda, and maybe they could eventually speak, if that's a thing that the liaison that year is interested in. And related to that, the student council primary elections are this week, and then the final elections are next Tuesday, and this will determine who the members next year are. So there might be shifts in some of the roles and who's running, so all the faces won't be entirely familiar. But those who are elected should ideally meet to discuss plans and expectations over summer before the first quarterly report in the fall. Next slide please. A specific area of improvement of ours would be finding a more efficient way to get student feedback from all schools. Gathering all or most information from just principals can sometimes be challenging, as understandably, they're very busy with everything else they have to do. Well, principals would still be greatly helpful with our overall school reports for academics and activities. A focus for next year should be maintaining regular contact with different student groups as well. The purpose of the Student Advisory Council is to show the realities of the overall student experience, quoted from the handbook across the district. And the only way to do this is speaking directly with all schools and students, which we started doing this year, but can do more efficiently next year with what we learned didn't work this year. Next slide please. This year, we came up with a working document template for next year's Student Advisory Council to use, and they can do that in a collaborative way. This template contains prompts for principals, we're discussing academics and activities, certain questions to ask students, and general topics to discuss when getting feedback from them, and resources like past presentations and the Student Advisory Council handbook. A major focus this pilot year was beginning with just the quarterly report, but if a lot of helpful student feedback is collected next year through regularly reaching out to different student groups, then the Student Advisory Council can begin completing certain parts of the policy manual to look at in representation as well. With the help of the school committee members during our Windsock meetings, it is determined that the Student Advisory Council would mostly look at sections I, J, and K. Lastly, we hope to increase engagement and communication from the Student Advisory Council to the students, and vice versa, from the students to the Student Advisory Council. New this year, there are monthly student council newsletter emails sent out after our meetings to the whole student body, so we've gotten a few student advisory council updates in there so far a couple of times toward the end of the year, but we're hoping to make that more regular next year. We were thinking next year, adding a Google form link to this too, so that there's a direct place for at least high school students to write feedback directly to the council. Also, the student council Instagram can be as rough as as well, as it's probably the easiest way to reach students, since not really anyone checks it, you know, with any work. The morning news is another method, and the other senior member, John, made this graphic that is on the slide, that was shown throughout our last few weeks of school in the morning news. It says committees, so I guess it's up for everyone next year to finalize committee versus council what we want to say. Next slide please. And that is all we have for the final quarterly report. I just wanted to thank everyone for being so welcoming to us this year, and thanking specifically Mrs. Stewart, Mrs. Isola, Mrs. Tippin Dunn, Dr. Thompson, Dr. Gagian, and pretty much everyone else. I really appreciate how welcoming you guys were to us this year, and open. Our trial and error, we've had this process. Just because I graduated doesn't mean I'm gone, so I'm happy to give my personal email if help is ever needed over summer or fall or after that. And while I won't be here next year, we have our other members here who will be, so they're going to introduce themselves and say hi.
Okay, I'm Sophia, and I'm the Vice President of Class Twenty-Five.
I'm Kaylee, I was the Vice President of the Class Twenty-Twenty-Four this year, but next year, I'm the President of the Class Twenty-Twenty-Four.
And this year, they helped to have the cookery sections for the presentation.
I just want to thank Kira for putting, all of you, but putting together the slides, and it was great to meet you a little bit, congratulations on your graduation. And yeah, I think we did learn a lot, you know, I joined the process a little bit later, but I think what you guys, sort of, as an inaugural group, have helped us figure out where we can take things, so much appreciated, and thanks for gathering all this input. It's great to hear directly from our students, so thanks.
It's not appropriate to clap when I'm meeting, but.
I know, I wanted to clap.
Really, just great job, girls, and boys, I know Kevin and John aren't here tonight, but thank you again for being our inaugural.
I know they're eagerly running away and they don't have to come back, but I do just want to thank them again, and you know, I had the honor and privilege to meet with the group a couple of times during the Windsock, from, what was it, ten nineteen? Yeah, there you go. But they're, you're a great group, you're a great group. And Kira, thank you for coming, even though you already graduated. You know, the emails that we exchanged, the work you put in, I already said it to the three of you, but no apologies necessary, you've done amazing work. As Kate said, you know, thank you for learning and trying and growing with us, and I'm just really excited where this is going to continue to go. And student voice is the absolute most important, and I just encourage all of us in the district to get more and more of that student voice and engagement as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Good luck.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Okay. Who's going to follow that up? Next on our list are Mr. Longley and Mr. Kerr. For our Athletics and Fine Arts recognition, we have Mr. Longley here. Mr. Kerr is remote, are we, who wants to go first? John, okay.
I'll be faulted, Mr. Longley. You're most welcome.
Okay, good evening, thanks for having me. I'm here to, we're going to recognize some of our spring sport athletes. We did hold our spring, Booster Club hosted our spring sports awards night last Wednesday. We just concluded the spring season today. Unfortunately, the baseball team lost to Milton, so that officially ends our athletic year today. But overall, it was a great year. We had, you know, multiple teams participate in the MIA tournaments. We had nine teams qualify for the tournament. We had a five-hundred record once we did qualify. We had two TVL championship teams over the course of the year, so it was a really good year for athletics. Some of our individual awards from the spring, I'll do our NHS awards first. Boys Lacrosse, MVP Frankie Forrest, Unsum Hero Ryan Valeri. Coaches Award Kevin Sople. Girls Lacrosse, Coaches Award Caroline Forrest. Coaches Award Emily Fame. MVP Olivia Lodge Softball. MVP Samantha Rose. Coaches Award Athena Alexopoulos. Coaches Award Madison Collins. And head coach Carol Sabino was the TVL Coach of the Year for the second year in a row, and the team also won the TVL Championship softball team, so congratulations to them. Baseball Co-MVP Jack Cropper. Co-MVP Sean Dittmeyer. Most Improved Quinn Burgess. Girls Tennis, Coaches Award Allegra McHalek. MVP Zo Fowler. And Most Improved Kim Lea. Boys Tennis, Coaches Award Tyler Lovell. Coaches Award Junot Ju. And MVP Partha Jamal Endaka. Boys Track and Field, Unsum Hero Luigi Gentile. Most Improved Andrew Delaney. Coaches Award Eric Whaley. Girls Track and Field, Coaches Award Christina Fontaine. Coaches Award Natalie Martin. And Coaches Award Jordan Robinson. Something that we do at the Spring Awards Night every year is we recognize our student athletes that participate in a sport every season since they entered Norwood High. It's unique to Norwood, and this year's group was, they were freshmen when we had the season that wasn't in 2020, but there was an added season the following year, so they could have participated, still could have participated in twelve seasons, but we gave them credit. That first COVID-2020 was standing. So we had thirteen student athletes that participated every season that they could, and that's usually really where we are, but just tremendous commitment by them to do that every season over the course of four years, particularly through COVID and coming back, so really significant accomplishments. So those seniors were Dylan Hamway, Sean Dittmeyer, Dylan O'Brien, Jack Brady, Caroline Forrest, Kaylee Brown, Jenna Norman, Talley Cadet, Conrad Schlechtbaum, Joe Davingo, Ryan Kelly, Leanne Sad, and Tyler Lovell. As far as Tri-Valley League, up is Boys Volleyball Awards that were on the next page. Perseverance were Zach Smith, Most Improved Xavier Walkins, and Coaches Award was Joe Green. So moving on to the spring Tri-Valley League recognition. For baseball, Jack Cropper was an All-Star, Sean Dittmeyer, All-Star. Quinn Burgess, Honorable Mention. And Angel Valerio Olivera was Honorable Mention. Boys Lacrosse, Frankie Forrest, All-Star. Kevin Sople, Honorable Mention. Girls Lacrosse, Olivia Lodge, All-Star. Emily Fame, Caroline Forrest, and Olivia Naughton, Honorable Mention. Softball, Samantha Rose, All-Star. And Athena Alexopoulos, Honorable Mention. Girls Tennis, Satvika Kamara was an All-Star. And Olivia Zaldivar was Honorable Mention. Boys Tennis, Partha Jamal Endaka was All-Star. Junot Ju, Honorable Mention. Boys Track, Dylan Hamway, All-Star. Dylan O'Brien, Honorable Mention. Girls Track, Christina Fontaine, All-Star. Natalie Martin, Honorable Mention. And Boys Volleyball, Xavier Walkins, All-Star. And Joe Green, Honorable Mention. So congratulations to all those student athletes and coaches.
Thank you very much, Mr. Longley. Congratulations to all the students, and congrats to you on a very successful athletic year.
Yep. Thank you, thank you for your continued support, and have a great summer.
Good, you too.
Thank you.
Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Longley, for taking that hit. It is always, it's always so hard to go after Kira in that report. I feel like I should actually check in with her, because half of what I'm about to say is a duplicate of what she dutifully digs into and says, but just, I'll go through some of our spring information, and some of it's crossover perhaps from what we talked about before, but I'll go through each individual discipline. So start on the art side of things. The Art, National Art Honor Society this spring invited twenty-eight members. The Friends of Visual Arts, with support from the Morrel Memorial and grant from the Norwood Cultural Council, is hosting Yard Art, which is a community-wide art event where residents create something unique for their yards. And to go along with this, FOVA is sponsoring yard art scavenger hunt for the whole community, so they'll get to go around to all the yard arts and try and come up with the information they need to win prizes. There are displays going up all over town over the next week or so. New displays at the Perks, the Morrel Memorial Library, and the Savage Center are all in process of being changed this week. And our art students got out into the community. Students in 3D Design III created an art installation around the theme of elements that was installed at the Ataboral Art Museum as part of their high art program. They went down there for a day and were able to set up a 3D art display. Over in the drama world, I know that you were aware of the festival play Ash to a Flame. They advanced through the prelims, the semis that were held here in Norwood, and performed at the Backstage Event Center in Boston at the end of March. Additionally, senior Samantha Megan won second place in both the METG One Actor Original Play Festival and the Sherwood Collins Playwrights Festival, so a little extra shout-out to Sam for doing some great things on the writing side. On the music side of things, the late winter and early spring is a busy time for performing ensembles, so again, some of what I'm going to say may have been mentioned before, but here's a list of all the accomplishments at our state music organization events. At the high school, at NHS, our jazz ensemble took a bronze medal at the MAJEK Cod Festival. The concert band took a bronze, and the orchestra silver at the MICA Concert Festival. The Madrigals took a silver at the MICA Choral Festival. The Concert Chorales took a high silver at the MICA Choral Festival. Most recently, three of our NHS students auditioned for the MICA Solo Festival. And again, MICA is the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association. It's the governing body for a lot of what we do. And there's a bunch of different competitions throughout the course of the year, and the ending one was the solo ensemble, and we had three students get recognized there, two received high silvers, and those were Kayden Bell and Stephanie Kurtiki. And we had one gold, which was Lindsay Collins. And we had one gold, which was Lindsay Collins, who actually received a perfect score, which was pretty impressive. Moving along, the Choral Program was able to provide a return to singing the National Anthem. So they were able to work with Mr. Longley and some of the sports teams. They hop back in with basketball this year and continue to look forward to singing the National Anthem at many of our home games. As you may have seen, Norwood was named one of the best communities for music education by the NAMM Foundation in 2023. We were only one of 16 towns in the Commonwealth to receive this honor. The awards are bestowed on districts who have a strong music program as a result of both support from the town and the community. There's a bunch of factors that go into that. But a lot of it has to do with how heavily supported the students are in the class, how heavily supported the students are from the community. So it's a real honor to get that award. We had a good time this year trying to get our students out and into the theater a little bit more. So there were three trips that went to see musicals this year, Mean Girls, Les Mis, and Hades Town. And what was really a lot of fun to see is there's nothing like coming home from a field trip with a bunch of music kids because all they do is sing. Could be good, could be bad, depends on the chaperone. There were, FOVA was really neat is the excitement that you hear on the bus and then the conversations that start from that. And they start critiquing the show. Did you like this person's voice? And how did you like the set? So it's really nice for them to get out and see a lot of the quality work that is in our area and get them inspired to go see more live theater. On the fine arts side of things, we successfully held our 24th Fine Arts Festival. There was artwork that was from across the district on display. There were performances from ensembles ranging from the elementary level all the way up to the high school. There was a production of Ash to a Flame, and our TV production course had a chance to show off some of their work from this past year. Also, Kira mentioned that we had our Pops Concert, which was successfully done in the beginning of May. And over the past two weeks, we've had five in-house elementary school concerts and two evening community concerts. What was really nice and special about this is this was Larry Smith's retirement tour. So Larry had a chance to be recognized after 30-plus years of educating our kids here in Norwood. And we are deeply going to miss him. He was a phenomenal educator and we are the better for having him. We had a wonderful sixth grade concert last night. We have another concert, seventh and eighth grade tomorrow night at the Cooley. Along with several high school drama performances this upcoming Thursday and Friday. And those are both student-directed. There are several different variations, along with a show that John's directing on Thursday and Friday. And then the year will end in Rhymes and Bright Colors next week when the CMS Musical, Susical, takes place at the high school stage. And that'll close out our 2022-23 school year of performances and events.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kerr.
You're welcome.
I have to say, I'm very excited to see Susical is at the high school. The last time, I think it was at the middle, it was here, I think at the Savage, when my daughter was in it. I can't even tell you how many years ago, and that was, it's going to be so much better on a better auditorium.
And you're probably still singing all those little songs.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It was adorable. So it's always great to see them do the junior versions.
Oh, and not to spill the beans, but we are doing Matilda in the fall. So if you're up to theater, we're doing Matilda in September at the high school.
Very nice. Looking forward to that. It's always a good production from the Fall Musical.
Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Summer.
Dr. Thompson, could I ask, I know we're always trying to find ways to celebrate more. Could we push out the list that Mr. Longley shared with us? And then also the list that Mr. Kerr just read and help our community, who does not faithfully watch the school committee meetings, to celebrate with us?
This is musty, CBCTV, yes.
To some of us, not to everybody.
Mr. Kerr would have to share his secret.
I'll just email them and ask them to request.
Thank you.
John is honored.
Thank you.
Just sharing it.
Thanks. You're all right.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr.
All right, you're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on our appearances is Ms. Bouchois, going to talk to us about, give us an EL update.
Good evening to everybody. Happy Wednesday. As mentioned, I'm here to give our kind of annual update for the English Language Education Program for Norwood. Thank you for having me here this evening as we discuss updates on our program and steps moving forward. I often start with a quote and just the opportunity to read this quote and just to be thinking about and reflecting upon as we hear what I have to say tonight and what I have to share, but also as we think about our students that we service directly. Language is the roadmap of a culture. It tells you where its people come from and where they are growing. Author Rita Mae Brown. So again, hold on to that. So our role, so we have the oversight of the ELE program, supports and services for pre-K all the way through 12th grade. In this role, we oversee identification, assessment, and programming for our ML students, coordinating, developing, and implementing our EL programming, collaborate with the English Language Parent Advisory Council, building principles and district administration on relevant ELE-related issues, managing and submitting and monitoring of Title III and Title III 186 grant activities, the general budget of planning and implementation for PD opportunities, curriculum resources, and technology software, and then providing guidance and support for children who are experiencing homelessness. Areas of focus that we're going to discuss this evening are our staffing updates. I want to recognize all of our teachers and paraprofessionals that are in the ELE department for this current school year. Talk a little bit about our shifting preschool to 12th grade multilingual population. Share some highlights from our ACCESS 2023 testing window. Professional development that has been happening in all schools throughout this school year. Give an update on our SIMP, our Coordinated Improvement Monitoring Plan. Talk about what activities and programs are being provided through grant funding. An update on our translation interpretation services for the district. And last would be our next steps moving forward. So our students are number one priority. And right after them are our teachers and our paraprofessionals and all of the amazing adults that service our students day in and day out. And I want to take a moment to recognize each of the English language teams at all of our buildings. We at the Ball School currently have Emily Donovan, Elizabeth Goldberg, Nicole Janelle, Diana Martucci, and Fatina Karapides. At the Callahan, Nazza Majid, Deirdre Scootina, and Arabella Adams. Over at the Cleveland, our team is Tenille Brennan, Ellen Lasry, Deirdre Scootina, and Rose Marie Pechel. Deirdre works in both buildings this year. Oldham, we have Kathleen Golden, Mary Kate Patterson, and Wafa Curdie. Over at the Prescott, we have Catherine Platt and Molly Sinis. Our middle school, we have Chelsea Evenyamke, Toby Lewin, Diane Lockwood, and Leila Diaz Doro. At the high school, we have Nate Cameron, Donna McTavish, Joey O'Connor, and Audrey Busa. At the Willet, we have Jocelyn Brunner, Heather Folen, Heather Geild, and Katherine Dickerson. So a great team that, and for those of you who've been with the district for some time, it has extremely exploded and gotten bigger and continues to grow. But we are very fortunate, I am very fortunate to work with all of these amazing educators. It makes my job easier. It makes my job joyful to do each day. And it's a wonderful, wonderful group, and I thank them for their continued service to our students. So looking at the population, provided some information just showing growth over the last five to six years. And these are in percentages based on what the population representation of the whole student body. Some takeaways, there was the year after COVID or the initial shutdown that we did see a decrease in our student population. Number of factors could have impacted that. Access to school, the less people moving into the communities because of many restrictions on travel and moving ability. So those were, those are some really big ones from then. We, the 2022 to 23 column is representative of our most recent SIMS data update. And then that's why I added the last column, just to show that since March, we've increased almost in all schools, the percentage of students. Oldham has more than doubled their population over the past six years. And again, there has been a steady increase in this population since 2017 to 2018. And I'm happy to take questions as we go, or we can wait until the end. I'm flexible. Some celebrations for our ACCESS 2023. We are exiting 64 students across the district, typically from second, more third grade up to 12th grade. It is not advisable to fell or exit a child in kindergarten, first grade because they're still at the very early stages of literacy development. So we do wait until we have more data and get to know them more. And then we do have, so that represents almost 13% of our existing multilingual population will be entering the former English language status. When they go into that, as a reminder, they are continued to be monitored for four years by the EL teachers. So each EL teacher team at each school has a large caseload. And then especially at the secondary level, because they're monitoring students for four years, we are currently monitoring 226 students. So if we think about that, in addition to our current population, which is around 560, we have a large population of students that we're overseeing. Teachers gather reports as part of that progress monitoring. So I do know a survey or a form goes out at the secondary level that the classroom content teacher area, content area teachers complete. And it's solely so that we can make sure our students are able to access the content without language support specifically very much.
Miss, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
On the slide before with all of the population.
Yes.
That the slide with, is that the percent that is currently eligible for services under the, okay.
Yes. Yes. And the LMPA Willet is so high and also increases because we, we're still screening preschoolers. So preschoolers, until I came, were not being screened. And they were supposed to be starting screening in 2017 as part of the Look Act. So we made sure to address that immediately. And I'm fortunate to have a great collaboration now with Dr. Quigley and Michael, even last year with Steven Bellhart. And we were able to train the kindergarten EL teachers to come over to the preschool and do those assessments with those students. Right now, we are just required to gather that data. We don't have to provide them with any type of service, but it kind of allows us to see what's coming up the pipeline. I do know that currently the Office of Language Acquisition is looking at the preschool identification process. And we just completed a survey this week, so they're collecting information from all the municipalities to kind of determine what that's going to look like in the future. Kind of really, we're not right now required to reassess them going into kindergarten. So that might shift. I personally am a proponent of that because a lot can happen from a child who's being screened at the age of three to the child two years later as a five-year-old. And I think that would give us more quality data. So that was what I, how I answered the survey. Or to get, do away with it altogether was the other option because all of the children are learning English essentially at that age.
Any other questions, someone?
All right. So a lot of professional development has happened in the schools this year with more to come. The biggest focus right now has been for SEI instruction kind of refreshers and to also discuss more integration in the schools. Should I keep talking?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Got to note that the.
This is the meeting of technical difficulties.
The TV sound wasn't working. I was quickly notified, hey, tell them the sound's not coming through. So I just wanted to talk. I know the technical difficulties today are just going to kill us, but please do continue.
Okay, thank you. So for the school committee, you also, you obviously received this packet a couple of days ago. So access is there to look at any of these presentations or PD that was delivered at all of the schools. Not all of them this year. I've done, did some last year. And then really, as we'll go through on next steps, there are more work to be done at the secondary level. But a lot of efforts to refresh classroom teachers, content area teachers on SEI appropriate strategies for students. Many of our educators went through the SEI endorsement training or classwork more than 10 years ago. And at that time, there was a much smaller population of ELs. So the opportunity to really practice and hone those skills really wasn't there. And then over these last three or five years with this huge influx, it's clearly in demand. But also with that demand requires those of us to provide them with the education to support those. So that is where a lot of those efforts are being made. Also to consistently be providing and sharing research of the importance of our EL students remaining in their classrooms and less standalone or more of a old-fashioned term of pull-out services and more integration or the old term push-in into the classroom setting. We have more data than ever before of the importance of that and the ability to acquire English when you are in the surroundings of native English speakers. And you're also hearing the curriculum content from that, those specialists in those areas firsthand.
Lisa, a quick comment before you. I appreciate that you gave us the links to all of those. And I did spend some time looking, and I thought what was especially impactful was seeing the survey responses from the staff after they went through the PD. So to know that staff took the time to reflect and consider how are they going to take that training and implement it. And I'm not going to go through all of them, but like teachers wrote about feeling like more empowered and being more creative and how they were adapting what they were teaching to the student. They were talking about meeting the student where they are, respecting the student, seeing their growth potential. You know, they talked about sharing what they were teaching the kids with the family and taking it one step further into the community. So I just wanted to highlight some of that because as you're sharing with us, I don't know that the community truly understands the significance of this work. So I just wanted to highlight it. Thank you and thank your staff for reflecting and implementing these important strategies.
Thank you. Appreciate that. An update on our SIMP. So as you know, we kind of came in toward the second part of the TFM. When I first started in the district in 21, 22 school year, we were assigned with three particular areas to provide evidence and data to support our progress in those areas. The first slide here is about ELE Criterion Number Five. And this, as is listed, are the next kind of steps. So up until this point, our progress report is approved. And then for the last submission of the school year, which will be on the last day of school for our district, is this continuation of evidence that I will supply to them. I would say our curriculum is definitely continuing into the summer and is more ongoing work. So I'll be able to add to that. And in regards to staffing, we already approved through FY '24 budget two additional teachers for the elementary level so that we're showing that we are addressing our needs based on our increasing population. For ELE Criterion Number 14. Again, up until that point, the progress report has been approved. The next part of this is just to make sure that we're making every effort to get to 100% of our staff. SEI endorsed, we have got about six that are all in process. A couple probably by now have received full endorsement. And then few others are just waiting on coursework to finish up from this current semester, if you want to call it. Or some based on their programming that they're involved in might end this summer. So we are making great progress in that area. But we are required to have all of our teachers, when servicing and providing instruction to a student who is identified as an English learner, that staff member in front of them, that educator, has to have SEI endorsement as part of their license. SEI endorsement does not expire, like our teaching licenses, they carry along with you. But that's also why it's so important to provide the refreshers and check-ins. But that's also why it's so important to provide the refreshers and check-ins. The last criterion, and I just noticed a typo, is ELE Criterion number 18. This one is specifically about our multilingual student folders. I would again like to recognize the EL teachers who have maintained folders for the last many years. They really just needed to be cleaned up. And that has been a massive administrative undertaking this year. We've been very supported by building administration, central office. 217 in the, in the building here was filled with folders for a few months because just like a cumulative folder, they need to be behind lock and key. But we were able to go in, we created a system. And now all of those folders will look similar to each other. And so that when someone needs to go into that folder to reference it, their documents are in the same order chronologically, reverse chronologically with checklist. There's also a record log. So I will, over the next week, be going into schools just to do some spot checks. Typically, when TFM's are done, a team from DUCY comes out. But maybe for the next time, obviously it was during COVID and they weren't. But we want to really make sure that we don't get cited on that again. I feel like we're in really good shape for this. Okay. Grants. So as part of my role is to also manage our Title III funding and also the Title III 186 grant. The 186 is specific to immigrant students. So part of that, over the last year and a half, two years almost, we've been able to add a multilingual homework club, adult English classes. We have the Multilingual Summer Academy. This is also how our EL paraprofessionals are salaried. We have been able to send teachers to the MatSal conference and again, professional development for EL teachers. And then other collaborations I wanted to recognize are, we are definitely benefiting from the Extended Learning Time Grant with the first-time-ever Afternoon Summer Fun Program and other enrichment opportunities. And then SR3 is also allowing us to offer a second year of summer English language screening for new students. So I'll talk about each of those individually. Multilingual Homework Club has a second year offering of this program. We did 11 weeks in the fall and then another five this past session. The reason of the change in time, change in length is because there's a timeframe there that MCAS clubs are offered for helping with prep for certain students. And we find often that it's impact, or they're, both programs kind of are attractive to the same set of kiddos. So rather than double dip and try to, you know, try to use our resources better and more efficiently, I waited and worked with the school principals on that and we just did the five-week session. It's targeted toward fourth and fifth grade students. And it's two days a week directly after school for one hour. And at that time, families are, they're the ones who have to pick up their students from the program. We, as seen here, we have the attendance of students that participated in the fall as well as our participants in the spring. The Callahan and Prescott, we weren't able to get staffing again. We have to be really careful of staff burnout. So a lot of those teachers who did the fall session also did MCAS prep. So they were, they were ready to not do something else, which was okay. But we were still able to offer it in three other schools, which was great. We'll continue to do that. I want to also recognize a group of teachers there that taught this year for our Multilingual Homework Club over at the Bosch, Ellen Norton, Mary Welch, and Marlene Antis. At the Cleveland, we had Deirdre Slatina, Molly Sinis at the Prescott, Kaitlyn Lang and Kathleen Golden at Oldham, Jennifer Market, and Catherine Lee with the Callahan. We also just are finishing up our second session of this year for our adult English classes, which is so exciting. We started this back when I first started. And it had already been a brainchild of a few of the teachers over there along with the support of Diane Ferreira at the Bosch. And I really was able to just come in, find the funding and do kind of the organizational side of it. And so we, this year, successfully offered two sessions at 10 weeks each. Again, this program meets once a week at the Bosch School. We extended it for an extra 30 minutes this year. Last year was 60, this year was 90. Co-teachers Sandy Polter and Ellen Norton have been the main teachers of this program so far. They develop the curriculum and they provide the instruction each week. The languages representatives so far have been Portuguese, Spanish, and Arabic for our families that come. In addition, the success of this attendance has been greatly successful because families are able to bring their children. We wanted to kind of be able to provide wraparound services. So we work with the high school and have high school volunteers. They're able to use that as their community service hours. Many of them themselves are multilingual students. So they're able to communicate with the teacher, some of the students that are in the classrooms. We have some of the high school students that work in the classroom. And/or we have a group of students that go and take the children down to the gym so that they can run around and play and have fun while their family members are upstairs learning English. It's really wonderful to see and witness. And it's not just parents, it's family members of Bosch families. So we've had grandparents, we've had cousins. So we are, we're really excited about it. And again, we had an increase with four additional adult learners this past year.
Just wondering Lisa, about, I think the last time we talked about this, there was going to be a look at whether or not it could be done at other schools? And I didn't know where, where things were at with that.
Sure. So absolutely, it's funding.
Yeah.
So because this is grant-funded currently, we'll continue to go there. I will be honest, our Title III funding decreased this year, not because of our population decreasing, that obviously increased, but because the overall EL population across the state in Massachusetts has increased. So funding has been dispersed to more, to more communities, greater numbers because we get that, that's federal funding money. And then obviously it goes based on off that. So yes, the goal is to expand it across the district and/or just be able to expand it to probably maybe two sites and increase the number of students. So more teachers, right? Like I don't think we need to really spread out our structure too much. But it's more like, I would love to have a beginner class and the intermediate class and an advanced class so we can really start to tier the learners so that students that started with us last year are making that progress and are able to go into a higher-tiered class.
Yeah.
But it's grant-funded, so continuing to research that. I have one on my list that hasn't opened yet that could have a potential for us to be eligible for from the federal government, so.
Yeah, I think there's something nice about these family members getting to see their students, their child's environment. But if it's not practical and we need to, and we can get more people into, you know, one or two locations, then that's probably a bigger win.
Yes, 100%.
Good luck.
Thank you. Keep trying. If you see any grants, somebody can, I'll send them my way. Thank you for asking, yeah. The Multilingual Summer Academy, we are in our second year of that or about to be this summer. The program this summer will be running from July 10th to August 3rd. We meet four days a week, no classes on Friday. Students arrive at eight o'clock in the morning and classes go until 1:30. We have the same exact timeframe of programming as Summer Matters, which is our literacy Title I program. And then Cogly Connects, which is up for our rising sixth graders. And students are provided with breakfast opportunities and lunch opportunities. And they'll have recess. And our students that come to the Multilingual Summer Academy are primarily our newcomers and/or our Level One students who are at the very early stages of learning English. Many of them either arrived to our district within the last school year. And many have arrived newly to our country as well. The focus during that session is on the four language domains of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Last year, we did a thematic-based curriculum because it's just more engaging and fun for the kids. Last year, we talked about animals and animal habitats. And then at each grade level, we had a culminating activity or presentation. And we celebrated that with each grade group sharing with their peers. So we plan to do that again this year. Last year was only two weeks, this year we'll have it for four weeks. Again, receiving this additional funding from the ELT grant has been awesome. Thanks to Dr. Taylor for writing that grant. And we are, we are over 60 students as of today. So we are doing really great with that. I have six teachers hired for that. So very, very exciting work that's being done there. And will help with time out of school, you know, those time out of school minutes and having students with the, giving them the opportunity to be around the English language. And we work really closely, I work really closely with Stephanie West, who's the coordinator for the Summer Matters program, to find opportunities where we can work together. So our kids will go to specials together, they'll have lunch together, they'll have recess together. So we try to navigate that too so that the kids can have that inclusion opportunity.
Which building does it?
Cogly.
Is that just elementary and the Summer Academy?
Yes.
K through five or 1 through 5?
Rising 1 through 5.
It's built at the Cogly this summer, the construction?
Yes.
Oh.
We'll all be there.
We will all be there.
We'll all be there.
We will all be there. It's a big party.
Was under different understanding though.
Yes.
We've gone and run that part three times.
We are fortunate to also provide transportation to and from. Pickups are at the school sites as well as the large apartment complex across the community so that families do not have to worry about that if they're unable to have transportation options for their children. So again, that's 8 to 1:30. To piggyback to that is that this is the first year we're able to offer the Afternoon Summer Fun, we're calling it. And this is for students that are attending the Multilingual Summer Academy as well as Summer Matters. Right now, we are offering it to all of the Multilingual Summer Academy students and percentages of students from the Summer Matters. As part of the registration process, we kind of, Stephanie West gathered data from those families to kind of gauge whether or not who needed what for that extended day. Would extended day allow your child to even go to the Summer Matters program in the morning? Would that be helpful for you? So a lot of those types of questions. So we're hoping to have a little over 100 kids for that program. That'll be from 1:30 to 4:30. We have a separate site coordinator for that, a separate staff for that. We are also providing buses home for that program for families. And they will do a variety of games and fun activities inside and outside the Cogly area. So we're really excited to be doing that for the first time this year, which is really exciting. Just some other grant highlights. I know I went a little out of order there, but this is the second year. Teachers are attending the MatSal conference. It's actually going on right now for this year. So today and tomorrow, virtually, our teachers are attending. They're given the option to go. Again, this is just high-quality professional development for teachers working with English learners. Also this year, our K to 8 teachers all participated in this course called Practical Co-Teaching Strategies to Effectively Support Your ELLs in Inclusive Classrooms. This was a great PD opportunity for them because it is right in line with our overall vision of having more inclusive opportunities and ability for our students to be more inside the classroom versus outside of the classroom. And I mentioned this a little earlier, but we are having our second summer of three days of English language screening to be administered during the month of August for new students. We have seen, and based on my own history as an ESL teacher for 10 years prior to coming here, it is a very typical trend that we get more students over the summer that are students who typically, English is not their first language. So allowing the students the opportunity to be screened during the summer months really helps with our administrative responsibilities at the start of the school years. So this basically allows our EL teachers to get to their students sooner, to start to G groups sooner and have to spend less time screening students because it is a lengthy process. And we are required to assess our students within 10 days of attendance to school. And notification has to be sent to families within that, within 30 days as well. So this really helps that timeframe.
I just want to comment really quickly because I, on the grants, because we were scrutinized and still are scrutinized so intently for our budget. And everything that you just spoke to us about for like the last 10 minutes isn't even in the operating budget. And they are services for our children who need and deserve these services. And our multilanguage population is increasing. And you said, Lisa, that our Title III funding decreased because the overall need in the state has increased. So the federal government hasn't said, oh, wow, Massachusetts, your whole need is increasing. Let me give you more money. Meaning the money went up a little bit, but then it had to be dispersed across the state. So our B went up, our state funding went down. You, Dr. Taylor, Ms. Sheridan, so many others are working so diligently to bring in these other grants. And this is all above and beyond our operating budget.
Yes.
So for anybody who wants to continue to scrutinize the budget of the school committee and the school district, come talk to me. Fair enough. Or you, or Dr. Taylor, or Ms. Sheridan, or all of us.
Yeah, no, it's not my.
Okay, not Ms. Sheridan, they can come talk to me.
And it's true. And the majority of our Title III grant is for EL paraprofessional salaries.
Yeah.
So having that responsibility is hard because it is, while that obviously directly impacts our students, it decreases our ability to expand on some of the programming and offer other programs. So there's pluses and minuses to that. But you are correct, all of those things I just listed were all grant-related.
Thank you for your wonderful.
Pieces. Couple last things are that the, we transitioned this year to Lexicate, language services. We were using Telalanguage, which is now known as Propio. We are officially going to be not using that anymore as of July 1st. We just had a little bit of a slower transition out of that programming, out of that service. And this year, one of the reasons is Lexicate offers more opportunities for us to provide translation services for our families. For example, Dr. Frazek at her Rising Sixth Grader Open House last week, we were able to have Lexicate on board with us with our top kind of languages that we needed, knowing of our families, to be able to simultaneously translate for our families. So what that looks like for us on an infrastructure side and working with Jo-Kid is making sure that we have enough Chromebooks and headphones for families so that when they come in, they're able to put those headphones on. Lexicate has it set up so that you can choose the language. And there's an interpreter on the other end who's simultaneously translating the words of Dr. Frazek. We've done that. I used it at the LPAP earlier this year. And then we used it online. I've used it a couple of times. And so that's a really amazing feature. And each time we do it, we're learning and reflecting on how we can increase usage. We also think this will increase participation with our community members. So we're navigating that as well. But it's certainly exciting because it's giving more access to more people in our community that especially based on our shifting demographics. We went through a big training for certain groups of teachers that would primarily be using their services for, say, parent-teacher conferences, special ed meetings, any type of administrative-related conversations, nurses, guidance counselors. So those were all staff members that were immediately translated. They all have access to setting up and making an appointment with translators. The other reason I really wanted to search to this platform was so that we could gather data on usage based on per-building, per-staff. We weren't able to do that with the previous program. The, the process was send an email with your document or send an email and make, or, I'm sorry, it would be a live call and you just called and it was on-demand, which is great. Lexicate also has this. But this allows teachers and staff members to set up an appointment. And then I can look and see data usage so that we can make sure that we're using the program efficiently and effectively. But also where is the need and where is it being utilized the most? So that'll be fun and interesting to kind of watch and observe over the next couple of years. Yeah, and I, right now, I'm the only person in the district who has access to be able to send translation requests off to Lexicate. And so far, that's been fine. Um, people just ask and send what they need. There's a certain format and then I just send it along. Um, again, we're able to monitor that, so that I can see, um, by department, who's ordering what and who needs what. So we can, again, continue to watch that. That is, um, in the general budget, so it's helpful to have that information.
So can you give an example of how that would be used, say, by like a, a general teacher or, um, in a, in a classroom? Like, so would she request, or they would request, to have some materials translated through you to Lexicate? Or is the idea that at some point they're going to, people can access Lexicate directly? And so that's two questions.
Currently, all the users that have been identified are those that have gone through the training.
Okay.
Um, so we could realistically give it to everybody, but it's, it was kind of, it wasn't suggested or recommended by Lexicate to do that, that first go-around. And so far, the teachers, if it is a classroom teacher, there's already, um, a coordination and a collaboration with the EL teacher or a special educator or a reading specialist or the nurse, that, that communication is already in place and knows the best way to communicate. So whoever that person is, they're setting up the appointment. Um, and then Lexicate has a specific link, they email it to you, the user, and then that user can just copy the link and send it to whoever needs it. So that's how we communicate to the parents. So it's not a Google Meet platform, it's their own platform that we use, but it would be used for, of course, parent-teacher conferences. In regards to any written translation requests, primarily, those are your handbooks, um, nurse health forms, district-wide items, those are our more formal documents, whether it's an ed plan, um, any types of reports that we have to put up on the website, um, public notice things, all those types of areas. But general informal communication, like a newsletter, that can be done through Google, um, Translate. Google Translate has made strides over the last ten to fifteen years in regards to their, um...
And Parent Square has the ability as well.
So Parent Square has been an awesome added, um, communication uh, item for our district this past year. And as long as the content in the email
Right.
that can be translated, but if there's any attachments that aren't already translated, they can't do that.
Oops.
So we regularly remind staff of that.
Yeah.
Um, and that also, I didn't list that in next steps, but those are some healthy reminders that I'm going to be providing to staff next year, um, and just being a little bit more conscious of providing more items in children's preferred or families' preferred language. I worked with Steph Bowden at the beginning of this current school year, so that on Aspen, when you pull up a student on that, there's like a front page, and we have that column right there for preferred language, so that you can quickly see it without having to open up the student's file or going to certain tabs. So it's right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we do have a large population of families who do request that.
Yeah.
It's another language and not English. Um, so we wanted to just make sure that we're trying our best to do that.
Right, so Lexicate's more about the, the meetings, family meetings.
Absolutely, yeah, or these presentations.
Yeah, legal documents.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
You're welcome. But most certainly for parent-teacher conferences, like that's the big, the big one. Um, also, unlike Tella Language, um, Tella Language was an on-call option, but there was no face to the translator or the interpreter. So now we can actually have a video call. So often I'm walking around with my Chromebook and we have a person there. So now I have some consistent, um, interpreters that I've used with families this year, which is really nice and it creates just, um, a more familiar relationship. It's, um...
Well, interpretation, body language, like, language is not just words, right?
Yeah, yeah. And depending on the topic of those conversations, I think having a face to the, to the language, to the words coming out is more intimate.
Right.
Yeah, so that's been a really nice added feature. I apologize, I'm looking at my phone because I didn't print the last slide. Um, so for next steps, um, and thank you Teresa for, she had asked this question, but we are hiring, um, two new elementary EL teachers for the Bolsh. Uh, there'll be a one-point-O there and then a one-point-O that will be shared between Cleveland and Prescott. That has already been approved in the FY24 budget. Um, we will explore further grant opportunities to expand our adult English program. Um, continuing to provide SCI refreshers, professional development for secondary levels, um, by buildings and departments. Continue our SCI review, scaffolding curriculum for newcomers, level one and level two students, PD for elementary by buildings. There also will be a continued, uh, ask for an E, some more support for the EL program department, um, because I am it. We will continue to develop and add to our ELE curriculum. We will further establish, train, and promote inclusion across all grade levels in all buildings for that integrated learning time for our L students with less standalone instruction. We are going to be implementing the Elevation Program Platform, and I can talk a little bit about that in a moment. Um, we are, I will be working with, um, administrators to create a homelessness subcommittee from our administrative team. And then, as always, the ongoing review of staffing needs based on our increasing EL population. Um, the Elevation Platform, thankfully, was approved in our general budget for this year, um, for FY24. And Elevation is a program that will allow us to collect all of the data for our students in one place. If you ask any EL teacher, EL coordinator, or anybody, we have spreadsheets like you wouldn't believe it. And a lot of it is because of the data we have to keep for our students. It isn't just one score, um, it isn't just one data point, and it's a lot, it has to do with the different levels that they're at in regards to learning English. It has to do with what language domain they need some focus on. We also have to write multilingual student success plans for students. We talked about that the last time I was here. So this program will be able to speak to Aspen, which gets all, you know, from Renaissance. Every, all the, our, our data points that we collect throughout the year from our different benchmark assessments will go to one place. So, so it'll really help with our, um, data collection and data distribution of our EL students. It'll also help with writing our student success plan reports. So we're really excited about that. As part of us purchasing this, we will all go through a training to use that EL platform, um, and it will be accessible by all EL teachers in the district. And then I do know there was a question about the homelessness group. So we have recently in Norwood, um, a scattered site was located, uh, was, not located, was open to, um, some new families. And knowing that there is a homelessness crisis in the state of Massachusetts currently, and we are also being impacted by that directly in Norwood, um, we strongly feel as an administrative team to create the subcommittee. We're at the very, very early stages of that. Um, we haven't even, we haven't established who's on that. We have some interest from people, but it's to take a proactive approach to figure out how we can put all these resources in one place. Um, with a scattered site, they're, um, coming in with some state support, so that there are social workers and caseworkers that are available. They're not, they're twenty-four-seven, um, because they go to different locations, but they're able to help families kind of get up and running and help them to the most important things, like food security and clothing, um, get them situated with, um, the school systems that they're living in. But we are seeing an increase there. Um, and there could be more, um, units opened to more families. We're, we're in regular communication with those individuals. And then we are also in kind of the moratorium with, in regards to the rents and evictions. So we're seeing an increase in that as well. And it's a great need. And, um, when this happens to families and our students, most importantly, it is very impactful on their day-to-day and it does cause some trauma. So not just for the students, but for our students who are in this, in the schools when this happens and, um, for our teachers and our staff. So we really want to be thoughtful and mindful about how we can pull those resources together and respond to that need for our community and be more proactive about it versus a reactive situation. So, so far, we're kind of all managing with, um, the great assistance of Priscilla, who's our McKinney-Bento liaison for the district. Um, I happen to have a lot of historical experience, um, from previous roles I've had in this, um, in the state in regards to this. So having some connections at the state level has been really helpful and we've been able to get some families placed under emergency circumstances. But it's, it's certainly a great need and it's somewhere where we want to put some of our attention on.
Thompson, if I could ask, as Lisa, as we figure out what the subcommittee is going to be looking like, um, it might be helpful to have Lisa join us in a budget meeting over the summer, if she can, um, because this is something we've been talking about, this is something that we need to share with the budget balancing committee, this is something that Ms. Sheridan and I were just working on in terms of the strategic plan. And this also touches on a conversation that Jody Smith and I just had with Representative Rogers. So I think the school committee needs to be pretty involved and aware of, of the work both ways.
Sure. That's what I have for tonight.
It's a lot. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions, anything I can help with?
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, and I think we asked all of our questions during the presentation, which may or may not have been efficient, but they're out there. And thank you very, very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, we have next, Dr. Frazek for a two-fer. Discussing the next year's Washington DC trip first.
So we are excited to get back to doing not just small field trips, but the big ones. Um, working with a new company that we're, uh, piloting out with our New York trip, they've been fabulous. I have like the coolest little app that you download and it shows like, I'm, I'm not going to New York unfortunately, but, um, I still can watch exactly what they're doing all the time.
Oh, that's cool.
Uh, they're Hummingbird is the name of the company. Um, they're local, which is also really nice as well. And I'm just been really, really fabulous. So I'm excited to see what they can do for us. Um, I've included the itinerary, although we still will tinker with it a little bit. Um, like one of the things that, this is sort of their standard itinerary. Um, they have like Mount Vernon on there, which we haven't done in a couple of years, mostly because we like to replace it with the African-American History Museum for the Smithsonian. Um, add a little bit more time in Smithsonian's and museums and things like that. Um, do the Holocaust Museum, because they tie a little bit more closely to the work that our students are doing. Obviously, they do a ginormous civics project. There is a lot of trifles at my school right now. So this will certainly be a really nice culminating event. Um, and we'll do a lot of work for scholarships, for fundraising, because it's really important that we, um, try and get as many people as we can on there. My dream is that some magical person will suddenly just give me like two-hundred thousand dollars, so I can take everyone.
Say it louder, say it, anybody listening.
I'll say it out there for the audience, some magical person. Just, uh, you know, anonymous donations, who takes those? Or not anonymous, we'll call it your name and put it on the side of the airplane. No, but we work, uh, you know, the PTO is helpful with that. Um, we also just kind of, you know, we put some things out to the community in hopes that we can get people to, uh, like sponsor, sponsor a kid to go down. Um, cost is eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. We did look at EF, which we had used before. Um, they only fly now, which I'm like, well, that's really nice. Uh, so it was like twenty-three-hundred dollars. And I was like, that's not in, in my budget. Uh, so we went with, uh, just one more reason that we like Hummingbird. I mean, who doesn't like a nine-hour bus trip with thirteen and fourteen-year-olds?
Listen, it's a rite of passage, just gotta...
It's, uh, I've done that. Approximately a couple dozen times.
I think Mr. Kerr might have implied earlier.
I was just gonna say.
He wants to be on that bus.
I was thinking, like, that man could be some fun on a bus. So, uh, we've, we've been known to do some karaoke and sing-alongs.
I think my DC trip in eighth grade was the sickest I've ever been on a bus, so, no, don't say that.
Well, it's okay, it's a long, it's a long ride.
Yeah, no, never.
We do have a lot of fun and it's, um, it, it is a really exciting trip. I know our families love it, our kids love it. So we're excited to get back on board with it.
Any questions on anything in our packet, since it's evening around the trip? Dr. Thompson, did you forward any questions to Dr. Frazek?
It's okay, so just, um, in the packet, it references, um, let me find it, about like travel insurance and then also the trip is canceled, but it said it was like optional. Is that something that is offered to our families to purchase?
Yes, so there's two different things. There's one, like, there's the rider that the company itself holds.
Yeah.
Um, we always provide. But then, yes, they do offer travel and insurance
Okay.
for students, uh, for families.
Okay.
So they have to cancel it. Um, in particular, I think they kind of focus around COVID.
Yeah.
Um, so that, you, if your student gets COVID and you have to do what you have, which has always been the case. But yes, they do offer that.
Okay, and then, um, some of the dates are wrong, so I was just saying FYI, like, because it talks about payment being due in twenty-two, twenty-three, but it should be twenty-three, twenty-one.
So I, I think this is a standard one, they actually sent me quite some time ago. Um, this is always a preliminary one I send, because I, I don't have a list of students for you. I would just be printing out the entire current seventh grade. I don't have a full, you know, I've, I named the four chaperones that go every single time, so I, but we'll, there'll be more than four of us, so.
Okay.
Um, once, come next fall, I do this, again, I don't necessarily come here, but I submit this again with actual names, actual chaperones, the finalized itinerary and all of those pieces.
Yeah, that's perfect, I just wanted you to touch on, like, if we approve it, there are things in the policy that you then follow up on. I just wanted you to cover that.
Absolutely.
That's what I have for tonight.
Thanks. Anything else?
Motion to approve.
Moved by David.
Second.
Seconded by Teresa, I need to do roll call. Joan.
Yes.
Hopefully Joan didn't go to sleep. Teresa.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
And yes as well, so that passes five to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And next, the middle school handbook.
We did not make any substantive changes to the overall handbook. The biggest thing was replacing sort of olders or varied policies with these, uh, more standardized school committee policies in various places. Um, we have updated the wellness policy to make sure that that's in there. I added the National Junior Honor Society, um, criteria in there. Um, I did take a look at the disciplinary, uh, stuff. Most of it is corrected, add a passage that matches, um, the new section that's referenced in the mental health hall, I don't know how you want to put it. So that's...
No abomination, I'm sorry.
All that fun stuff.
Thirty-seven H and three-quarters.
Thirty-seven H and three-quarters. Because they, they don't know anymore, fractions, I guess, so. I know some.
You can say this every time, but every time I hear that, I think of Harry Potter, and that we're on platform nine and three-quarters.
They're not quite fun.
And it's, and it's a magic passage, it just ended up in a bill. So, I mean, I guess it goes, right?
Let's not go down the road. Thirty-seven H and three-quarter changes.
Just trying to make light of the word.
And I, I should also note that I did add a bit about, um, our RISE program.
Right. Thank you very much for the iterative process that this can be, especially with the policy cycle that we are trying to get into the rhythm of. So I think we'll hit a stride at some point. I think all the questions were answered that we had, so thank you very much. And then you, Dr. Thompson adds a new letter and then it,
Yep.
What's the launch code on that? It just goes out to everybody and then?
Well, I basically, I basically rewrite the letter July, August and send them out, all the handbooks, and they stick it as a one-page or that's just, last year's letter is a place one right now, but the handbooks don't go out until September, so you have a little time.
September, yeah. So it goes up, it's available on the website at that time and then to parents at any time. But they are, sort of the beginning of the school year remind me, are people meant to like, we give them a heads up, like read this, right?
Yeah, there's a sign-off page.
Is it still an Aspen? Is that still?
Yes, so you do it in Aspen. One thing actually, it's been mentioned, my school council talked about was that maybe people aren't looking at the entire handbook before they click a little button on Aspen and send it in. I, I mean, I know you are. I know my parents are. I know you've read it. Well, I know you've read it from cover to covers, so. Where?
Yeah, I'm gonna hedge that not everybody does.
So one thing we talked about, so on, I think this page, we kind of, a couple of years ago, we did sort of a add a glance. So we're planning on actually printing this out and sending it home. Using that fancy Lexi Heat stuff to translate it into multiple languages, just so we know some things going home. It has kind of the big pieces on there, so.
The highlights.
And then the highlights.
Right, the crib notes.
Don't be on your phone. I think that's really helpful though, Margot. And I think, you know, I read it because I'm in the seat, right? But I think a lot of people, and what I like about this and Dr. Gallagher's handbook and the work that we did with Dana Brown, is we're also trying to help cross-reference to school committee policy. Because I think a lot of people just don't understand how these things intersect and where to look for resources. So we're taking a step forward to make that clear. And that's important.
And I think it's also nice that what we are doing slowly, the elementary, middle and high school, while not exactly the same, because we have different students and different needs, there's a sort of consistency or a through line. So that there's, you're not kind of bouncing from one thing to another. So I think that's more and more getting in that direction.
Any other questions on this before we take a vote?
Just something that I had asked over email, and I know it's like kind of handbook, but bigger. And after Thompson, he said maybe we readdress it in the fall. But as we figure out the Junior National Honor Society staffing piece. And then also at our last meeting, Mr. Longley, he had put his athletics handbook and high school handbook and said he was going to be working on a middle school version of the athletics handbook. So if we could, I'm fine with approving this tonight, but if we can have a touch point maybe at our August meeting, just to see if there is any update with athletics handbook and the Junior National Honor Society.
Right. Well, Junior National Honor Society probably will come back at that point in time. But Jonathan did share the middle school handbook from the MIAA. He suggested a gift book on the CMS website. So that's not necessarily Norwood's handbook. It's the business day handbook, but there isn't.
He shared that with us?
He shared that with me.
Oh, could you pass that on to us?
No, it's not here.
I'll just go find it if you don't mind.
If I can find it. But he shared that link, so when we can edit it out. Obviously, he's been involved with tournament games, so I'm not sure that he passed that on to Margot or anybody else, but we'll follow.
All right, I would definitely check. The incredibly helpful MIAA website.
Oh my God, that thing is, no, let's just not go there.
Well, if I can, I'll make a motion to approve with the request that we also have a touch point on this handbook and those two items in our August meeting.
I will second.
And I will take a roll call. Joan.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
I have a S as well, so that passes five to zero. Thank you very much, Dr. Frazek.
Thank you.
So Dr. Frazek has been out of the, has been out of the house quite a few nights this week too, with all the concerts and everything else that's going on. I've been sitting here just waiting for the phone call. When are you, when are you coming home? We definitely appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
I gotta get home to decorate for her birthday.
Oh my God, okay. So next up is Miss Nina giving us a tiered focus monitoring update. Hey, go.
Okay, excellent. This will be super quick.
Yeah, so you saw the slides. Any questions?
Pretty much. So just to give you an update on our tiered focus monitoring for special education. Our review year was '21, '22. It has taken us this long to actually go through the real process with them. And this school year, we have been participating in our SIMP, which is our Continuous Improvement Monitoring Plan. So just the timeline of events. We did a self-assessment in January of '22. It was put off a little bit because of my stuff going on and stuff going on in the district. So the state was gracious enough to let us move that up to January of '22. We did our onsite on April 28. We got a draft report in May. We got our SIMP report. I had to submit the SIMP report on June 30. And then we got our final report on July 12. So I'm happy to report to you all that as of May 15, we are in the clear. We have passed all of our progress reports and we are on to the next, next portion of auditing from the state. So just as a reminder, the three areas that we were cited in was age of majority for Norwood High School, excusal of team members from meetings, and immediate provision of IEPs and finding of no eligibility to parents. So those were the three key areas in which we have been undertaking professional development. So as part of our SIMP efforts,
Excellent.
Sorry.
We have had multiple staff meetings where we utilize, we use, utilize the professional development in the areas of finding. We've conducted record reviews after the professional development was completed to make sure that what was presented in the professional development was actually being implemented. We have had follow-up, a follow-up occurred on any non-compliance after the PD. So there were, I'll tell you specifically for age of majority, we did the professional development. We did the record review. There were still findings when we did our root cause analysis of the professional, record review. So we went back and had to do more professional development around it. And then reports were all submitted to the DESD for review. So as of May 15, we got this awesome email that let us know that all progress reports were submitted and approved. Our next scheduled review, because the special education portion of tiered focus monitoring is actually two sections now. It's group A and group B. We just completed group A. We'll be doing group B during the '24, '25 school year. And at that time, they will be assessing relationship and professional development, parent-student, community engagement, facilities and classrooms, oversight, time and learning, and equal access. So that one's a much heavier left when we get there. So any questions?
Hopefully we do that in '24, '25.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Just as we're trying to figure everything out with COVID and COVID. Perfect.
Hopefully, hopefully I'll still be standing at that point. Yes, yep.
It'll be a fun year. I'm going with Margot. It'll all be fine.
If this was easy, everybody would.
Exactly. We got the best people here.
Well, thank you. Just to recognize you and your staff for all your hard work, you know, even before the tier of focus monitoring and then during it, and then, you know, with the findings and implementing it, no longer having them.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you, everybody.
Sure, run away.
While we continue on, do we want superintendent's report and late breaking?
It's all choreographed.
It's all choreographed, okay.
It's all choreographed, don't you worry. All right, so I'm going to invite Norwood Teachers Association President Jody Smith up. And while she's moving up, I'm going to talk, start at the first list here. I just want to say again, congratulations to the class of 2023. We had a great graduation on Sunday. And Dr. Gallagher and I were joking that he really got a feel for trying to call a snow day, when he was trying to call a graduation amongst a rainy weekend. But we did manage, he did a great job kind of squeezing it and moving up just a half an hour so that, and as I was driving away and driving home, rain dropped. So we managed to nail that one. But one thing I want to comment, you know, looking back at seven, seven years ago really, because I came to graduation when I was the superintendent-elect, is the difference in that walking piece. So I can remember in that walking, there was a good portion of kids that were going into the workforce or exploring things after graduation. That's not what I heard yesterday. As Kira mentioned earlier, this was the first graduating class from our career pathways, the medical career pathways. And I believe almost every single one of those students is going into a healthcare field, be it nursing, be it some sort of research around medical technology, be it health and food science. And, you know, we are sending them off not just with a high school diploma, but with a high school diploma that is focused in on that. The other thing that we have worked on and we have had this conversation about the students who go to Norwood and how many of them are first, might be first-generation college students. And maybe college isn't the thing right away. And what are they going to believe high school wouldn't be able to make a living? And what we heard and what was a major focus of the last year and a half was really hooking up with trades and unions. And we heard a lot of that. And, you know, if kids haven't figured it all out, that's okay. But our job is to make sure that kids have some sort of direction when they leave our high school. And we're seeing, you know, not just the college piece, but also vocational careers, military. And I can tell you, every time I listen to those colleges and where kids are going, I am really impressed where they are. Our guidance staff do an incredible job helping these kids get where they want to go. And I want to mention them as well. But I'm very proud of that evolution of, you know, what comes out of Norwood High School. In reality, it's what comes out of our system pre-K through 12. So we really have done that. The middle school today just had a big career fair, looking at different careers and having speakers come in and kids move around and hearing some of that. The Project Lead the Way program, another year and a half, two years. We will, another two years, we will see kids that have done those engineering pieces. And it'll be interesting to see what kids are graduating from there. We are looking or trying to get a business career pathway up and running. All those things are important because, you know, you can make a great living in the trades. You can make it if you go to college. But, you know, these kids, every time you change majors, if the major changes, at least another half a year, and college has gotten so expensive, it is a major blow. So I want to compliment us as a district, looking at that and making that improvement. So with that, Mrs. Smith was supervising me and Dr. Wyeth last night at the Norfolk County Teachers Association Awards. And Mrs. Smith wanted to share some of the great news with you, so share some of my time and spotlight with you.
Oh, thank you for sharing.
Yeah, I'm a good share.
My gosh, okay. Last night, as Dr. Thompson mentioned, we attended the banquet with the Norfolk County Teachers Association. And every year, they have this wonderful banquet. There's about 500-plus educators all in one room. Some of them behaving well and listening, others not so much. However, each year, we are asked to nominate two people. And one is an honor award. And the honor award is given to someone who supports education in many different ways. It has been nurses. It has been school committees. We nominated the school committee one year when we had the override, I believe the override. And we have nominated custodians and so forth. This year, our honorary was Dr. Alec Wyeth, who is not here this evening for me to point to him. So I'm going to read a little, just a couple of little lines from what was submitted to Norfolk County Teachers Association. "Dr. Wyeth is dedicated to education and being a lifelong learner himself. He is always willing to try new things that will benefit our students. He always listens to teacher feedback and works hard to use data to drive new initiatives. His hard work and dedication has made a huge impact on the entire district." So that was Alec. Then we are asked to nominate a teacher for Teacher of the Year. And every year, they present the Laura Walcott Award. And that is in recognition and named for a former teacher and big-time board member for Norfolk County Teachers. And she was from Walcott. So our nominee this year was Patty Dusset. Patty has been a kindergarten teacher in Norwood since 1997. I was going to say 77, but she would be ready to retire. After I said that.
Hold that against.
Yes, mhm. And she's been lead teacher at the Willett School since it opened. Patty puts the lead in lead teacher, as she always leads by example. Patty always welcomes a variety of learners into her classroom with open arms and works tirelessly to make sure their needs are being met. She loves and believes in every child. So that's why we nominated Patty. Unfortunately, she did not win the honor. It was given to a gentleman from Walcott. This year, it, what was that?
I said ragged.
Yeah, that's what we were thinking. Okay. And this year, they started a brand-new award. It's called the Rookie of the Year. So it is to highlight people that are in their early stages of their career, which I think is just magnificent. This year, we nominated Dan Quinn from the Cleveland. So Dan began at the Cleveland School as a first-grade teacher in 2020 after years of being a paraprofessional. He has now moved to second grade. Dan also works as an after-school MCAS tutor, universal design for learning coach, and works every summer in our Heroes Camp. Dan goes above and beyond every day and especially embraces the students with special needs. He brings a passion for learning and excitement into his classroom, especially with his class pet Polly. So everybody has to have a class pet. The magnificent thing is Dan won. Yes, yes, yep. So Dan won the very first Rookie of the Year Award from Norfolk County Teachers. So we were very excited. And last, last night, Norwood was very well represented. We had six tables and we were front and center. Normally, we're in the back corner. So this year, we were elevated.
Well, that's because he knew I was going in. And everybody behaved.
So we, just because they think, we got moved to the front. So thank you. I just wanted to share that exciting news about our educators and say thank you for all you do.
Well, Jody, thank you for nominating Dr. Wyeth. And I think that's a great honor for him to have.
Yes.
Mrs. Dusset is amazing. And Mr. Quinn, I know firsthand. He was a paraprofessional in my son's second-grade class, Mrs. Huey. Can't completely do the math whenever my son was in second grade. He's in sixth grade now. And I was the parent that year. So I was in Mrs. Huey's room often. And Mr. Quinn was getting his masters at the time and was a year away from becoming a teacher. But even as the paraprofessional, he was absolutely amazing and I saw it firsthand. So very bold.
He is a great addition to our staff. He really is. And it was our pleasure to nominate Alec. It was us. So, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank Mrs. Smith.
You're welcome.
All right. I would also like to mention the building project. And again, you know, the fences are being set up. We already had it mentioned earlier that there is a groundbreaking next Tuesday. But I want to, and this was in my superintendent's newsletter as well. But there are building project information sessions that are going to be held the first and third Friday of each month, starting the 16th. And those are 10 o'clock in Town Hall in the finance room. So this is where you, this is where you as a community member can go and get updates on the construction process. You know, what's coming next? Are we bringing steel in? Are the HVAC people coming in? Usually people who live nearby are the major people who want to know that. But it is open for the entire community to get us first and third Friday of the month, starting on the 16th at 10:00 AM in Town Hall in the FinCon room. Family, the family workshops, the SEL workshops finished last Wednesday, the 31st. There is a list of resources that the facilitator gave to us. Those are posted on the family resources section. This also went out via Parents' Square, but I wanted to mention that. We are going to look at maybe early October, late September, bringing back some of those. We did have some pretty good response. I think we probably would even get more response. So between those and our workshops that are run with our partnership with McLean Hospital, this is ways that you as, as parents and families can come together and address some mental health and anxiety issues that are plaguing our young people right now. Today, at about 3 o'clock, the family communication survey went out. This is to gauge how people are accessing information in the district, give feedback on the communication sources that we are using. So if you could please, please fill that out. We'll probably send out a reminder. We'll probably close that off at the end of the month or right at the end of school. Another reminder for families, that bus registration closes the 30th of June. After that, we're not taking new registrations. So if you need a bus and you want to make sure you have a bus, make sure it's in by the 30th. Otherwise, there are no guarantees. That started a couple of weeks ago. So please get that in. If you have problems with the forms or anything on that one, please call the transportation department. And a quick reminder, the last day of school again is the 21st, Wednesday, the 21st. It is a half-day. Please make note of what time dismissal is. I'm not going to try to list all the different schools, the different levels. But those will be communicated as well. And Monday, June 19th is the state holiday, Juneteenth. And we will not have school on that day. So we go Friday, the 16th, three-day weekend, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then unfortunately, we need to, I need to bring back the myth and misunderstandings page. This past week, I got several calls. There are social media things going out there about how we are cutting special education. That is false. I will have people go back to the town meeting slides, slide number 14. On slide number 14 are the mandated positions that were in this budget. For special education, we have increased three teaching positions. One at the Willett, one at the Oldham, and one at the middle school. And we increased the, one of the adjustment counselors at the Callahan, .2. So it's a total of 3.2 additions. Those were on top of what was added throughout this year. And three of those are benefited. So again, if you go back to the town meeting slide number 14, you see the special education piece there and also the English language learner. But we did not cut any positions in this budget. I will repeat that again. We did not cut any positions in this budget. If someone is putting that out on Facebook or whatever else, they are sorely misinformed. And I do appreciate the three people that called me for clarification. That doesn't owe. and I do appreciate the three people that called me for clarification, that doesn't always happen, it just goes around and around and around, and all of a sudden, it comes back, but I just wanted to mention that as well. So, that's the superintendent report, Madam Chair.
Fabulous, does anyone have any questions for Dave on the superintendent report this evening? Lovely, so we can continue with our agenda, next up on our agenda is budget. Ms. Duke, would you like to give the budget subcommittee update?
Sure, a quick update, in the packet, you have our agenda and link to all of the materials that we reviewed at our last subcommittee meeting, which was on May 24th. Just a recap, at that time, we looked further into the LMPA principle, but we already covered that at our last meeting on May 31st. We looked a little bit more into some special education requests that I believe are still being worked on and are forthcoming to the full committee over the summer. We spent some time looking again at our priorities and goals document, I went over this in some detail at a previous meeting. As a subcommittee, we are still defining, still seeking and open to feedback from everybody else on the committee. But the balancing committee will be resuming at the end of June, early July, we're still figuring out the dates.
Yes, we are still figuring out dates, I think, yeah. Everyone's thinking summer, and I think that's a problem.
Yeah, well, I think we're definitely going to have to make.
The last survey that went out was not promising, so it has to be.
Yeah, but we are intending to resume as BBC, so we have a long list of things that as a district, we're working on to prepare for that process. At the next meeting for school committee on June 21st, Ms. Sheridan is going to give the spring athletic report. We are also going to be bringing forward the Student Opportunities Act plan in regards to the financial report that Ms. Sheridan had to file with the state. We are going to be looking at the middle school staffing for the new building more with Dr. Fraser, hopefully in August, and then into the fall. As we've discussed before, we have contract negotiations with Unit A and Unit B starting in the fall, so starting to do some analysis around there. That is all a quick overview of a much longer conversation. We have scheduled meetings again as a budget subcommittee for June 13th at 1:00 p.m., July 18th at 10 a.m., and August 8th at 10 a.m. We are only meeting twice over the summer as a full subcommittee. We're trying to take a little bit of a different approach, as in like working groups, so some of the work Ms. Sheridan and I are working on together, some of the work Dr. Thompson and Dr. Taylor will be working on with the admin team, some things Ms. Semino's working on, and then we'll bring it back to the subcommittee, because there's a lot of work to do. Ms. Sheridan and I met yesterday to work a little bit more on strategic objective one, because as all of you know, we're working on the strategic plan for the last year, and objective one is investment and resource allocation, so she and I were just working on the worksheet and getting that done a little bit more before Tuesday's final meeting. If you have any feedback on that, that you want us to look at in the strategic objective planning meeting on Tuesday, please let us know.
When do you need that, bud?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
So that I can then finish doing what needs to be done for Dr. Thompson, Dr. Taylor. And then, I believe that is it for the budget update at this time, unless there's any questions.
We talked about that, we need to answer for pulling that question back up. Section 2.1.
Okay, yes, yes. All right, so that's the budget update.
Hey, we have to vote really quick, I want to just wait one second. The next item is a vote, so I just wanted, and since we're done, I figured.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Ms. Sheridan, we have a budget transfer.
Yeah, I thought you were.
I know, I was like, I didn't say anything, you need to vote, but okay.
No, 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 I just, I knew that the very next item, if there were no questions on budget subcommittee, we're going to be.
I mean, if you want to vote with an agreement of everything you said, I'll take absolute.
Your best agreement, whatever we do. All right, I have one budget transfer.
A vote of affirmation.
I have a budget transfer approved by school committee, and Chair Anne Marie has already signed it because it was of an urgent nature, given the closing of FY '23. It is, Joe Kidd was wanting to purchase a new online security system. The amount of the transfer was $14,472, and it was basically, basically just moving from the instructional software line to more the infrastructure software line because of the, it's online security system. So that's all that I have today, don't get used to these really short reports from me, I'm going to hold them.
Any questions on the budget transfer?
No, motion to approve.
Moved by Teresa, seconded by Kate, okay, roll call, Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm yes as well, the pass is five to zero, Kate, you move. Thank you for staying, okay, so moving on to the next item on the agenda is the middle school building update. Dr. Thompson, do you want to start us off, or?
No. Teresa will need to, because I wasn't at the pass too.
Okay, so we last met on May 22nd, as middle school building committee. The meeting was a lot of approvals, just like paperwork and different things and voices to move the project along, but a couple of things people should be aware of, with the votes that we took at the last meeting, all of the alternates that we have discussed before are proceeding, including finishing the concession stand. People should know in town, just to be aware, of the cost of the concession stand is currently at $708,706.
I think we just.
708, 706?
708, 706.
Yeah.
But that is something that we've been talking all along, it is something the community invested in through fundraising dollars, and it is going to be rebuilt as part of the middle school building.
It is stunning, it is just, I say this every time I hear that number, because of the fundraising dollars that built the original one.
Was not near that.
Not even close.
Yeah, so some of it's inflation, some of it is just all the different trades that are required to get in that building, so, but the commitment from the middle school building committee is to rebuild it. As this committee knows, before the middle school building committee, some of us, Kate and I, were receiving some questions from people in the community around some trees that apparently are slated to be removed by the baseball fields. So that discussion came up at the middle school building committee, Mr. Riccardi had also heard from some people in the community. This seems to be an area that's not directly under the authority of the middle school building committee, kind of overlaps with the authority of Mark Ryan, who is the tree warden. To be entirely candid, I am not quite sure what the next steps are, but I believe Mr. Slater, who's the chair of the MSBC, said that an update will be given at the next middle school building committee meeting. But if others in the community are concerned about the tree removal, my understanding is that they should contact Mark Ryan, but probably would also be helpful to contact Alan Slater, so that both parties are informed. So we meet again as middle school building committee on Monday, June 12th, at 5:00 p.m. That meeting is actually across the hall here in 219. And then on June 13th, 10 a.m. is the groundbreaking at the Cookley that many of us will be at. And then, as Dr. Thompson already mentioned, twice-a-month meetings with the construction team are starting on Friday, June 16th, at 10 a.m. And I think it's important, Dr. Thompson, if we clarify for people, that we don't have authority over these meetings. It is the middle school building committee, and it is the construction team. So places to ask your questions and get feedback on what is actually going on with construction is most suitable for those meetings.
Well, those meetings, do we know if they're going to be recorded?
You know, I asked that question, I didn't get a response, so I do not know.
Because, you know, most community members would not be showing up at that particular time of the day.
Yeah, we can find out on Monday, and, I mean, Monday's meeting, the middle school building committee will definitely be recorded, but I can ask the question again and get back.
I know the town definitely has the ability to hit record on any kind of, you know, Google Meet and stuff like that, so they could probably, you know, have it, just wanted.
Yeah, I don't even know if they posted it as a hybrid, I think it's just a one-person.
It's mainly, I mean, I mean, back 22 years ago, when they were working, when I was doing my administrative internship, and they were renovating and adding on to, it basically was a meeting that you would go to to figure out how you were going to do all the construction bits.
Yeah.
This first part, because it's mainly large pieces and not connecting, and schools aren't really as involved with it, but if that, but, but people want to know, you know, what's the truck pattern? When's the steel coming in? What's the plan for this? So those are the kinds of things where that information will be shared, so.
Yeah, I just want, I'm not to suggest this would be a hybrid meeting, but mine probably will not be.
Yeah.
But I know that you could technically have an owl running in the cord.
Sure, no, I know, yeah.
So hopefully.
Yeah, I don't have the answer, but I will.
Hopefully, middle school building committee member, chair, if you're listening, the community would probably appreciate being able to look back on it, had not at a 10 a.m. time.
Just real quick, Dave, but to the earlier question about summer programming, those things overlap in a sense, someone's there representing that.
But they're still not going to have, they're not going to have the trucks in during the time when the kids are dropping off and picking up, so that.
That's already been communicated.
That's already been addressed.
That's going to have to be the case during, when school starts in the fall anyway.
Yeah, I was just making sure that way.
Yep.
Yeah, they've been very thorough, the project team, in figuring out like blackout times for, you know, trucks not coming in and supplies not being dropped off. And we did share previously, both at a school committee meeting and at the middle school building committee, like the plans for the summer, so they are on the middle school building committee website, if people want to see exactly which parking lots are being closed. And unfortunately, the current concession stand, I believe, is going down June 15th, like things are starting to happen over the next couple of weeks, but there is also the commitment to have the fields in their new version ready to go by August 15th, I believe we said, for the fall sports.
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope, just once we get the agenda and packet for Monday's meeting, I'll send it out as always, and then if there's any questions that you want David or Dave and I to bring to the meeting on Monday, let us know.
Fabulous, thank you very much. Okay, so moving to the next item, so we have long-term agenda review on here. We also have it listed on the long-term agenda for next week, or for our next meeting. We have, I'm going to suggest that if nobody has anything to talk about for June 21st meeting, or that we can discuss that now, and then we postpone the 23-24 discussion until next meeting, if that is okay with everybody here, unless there are specific questions really burning people's minds they need to discuss right now about long-term agenda.
Just one quick question, the rest of it's 23-24, can we? But I have asked a couple of times about an executive session solely focused on safety and the C app, and just wondering if that's something we can schedule.
Yeah, so there's, there's a couple of things that people are working on this summer.
Okay.
On that, so I think September would probably be a good time to go through that again.
Okay, so then, Anne Marie, as you're continuing to work on the 23-24, if you could just put that.
Yep, and if, and if everybody didn't know, see it, Jamie did make a folder for 23-24 and added a long-term agenda with our meeting dates in there. I planned to go in there, and I don't think she actually like moved over any of like the parking lot stuff or started to populate it, except maybe for the, I asked that because we had July, August kind of tacked on to the 22-23, and I asked her to move those over, so I think those should start to be populated. So obviously, it is available to everybody to view, so feel free to, please, to go in there and start making suggestions. But then I will begin to move over the have-tos into that, into that list, and start the parking lot, so that we can start moving things in, and that is the discussion. Obviously, I would like to have that done before Friday, packet due for the next meeting.
Okay.
So that is the plan.
Thank you.
As we look at this really quickly, did we get a confirmation on the Oldham, Oldham playground? The Oldham playground? No? No, it's still working.
Yeah, still working on it.
Do we think it'll be ready for the 21st, or no? Good question.
Maybe.
Maybe.
We would like it to be.
Let us know when you know? Yep.
Yes.
What about the Cleveland sensory area, because were they planning to start taking things down over the summer? Because if they were, they do have to come back to us.
I will have to check on that.
I think that, yeah, we did discuss that, in moving it to the 21st, and with the plan to check in with both of those schools to see if they're ready to come to us with something, because obviously, if they're going to do work, and we did actually discuss that, if they're going to do work over the summer, that we should have that approved beforehand. But definitely, it's listed right now on the long-term agenda under the 21st, and then.
But just to be clear, for my own clarification, so we've approved their fundraising efforts and process. They, what, basically, they come back and say, here's the money, but then it goes to Riccardi and Ms. Sheridan in terms of getting that money to the appropriate contracting folks, like, we don't, there's nothing in terms of the plans on our lap, it's more about making sure that Mr. Riccardi.
Well, we still approve the plan, so if they're going to begin, start to begin removing items, we do still need to.
We have, we have to accept the money before they can spend it.
Exactly, so if, if, if they're going to spend it on removal, that's, so yes, I mean, yes, we essentially.
I thought we already, so, we already accepted, we voted to approve their efforts, their fundraising efforts.
Correct, but the, according to the.
So once the money exists, then we say, okay, great.
Yeah, we're, so, and that's the policy we've been working out, right? And how.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Exactly, how KCD would work, and it, I mean, it makes, I think we've kind of been coming to that it makes the most sense, that if you're going to have a massive project before you start fundraising, you should probably come and talk to us and get pre-approval, I mean, our policy says that you will, we will accept the donation, but you certainly wouldn't want to come to us and say, here's a donation for a playground, that we're going to say, absolutely friggin' lutely not, because we're going to have to maintain this monstrosity once you donate it. So, yeah, so we did approve, in theory, right, the playground that they were planning on, or the sensory area, right? But now, we would actually need to accept the donation before work.
That check-in point?
Yeah.
And does it make sense that then they will have conferred with facilities? So that when we, they're, they're not just passing it on to us with a bunch of, you know, non-recommendations or whatever, like, for us to.
Right, how does that actually work, once we get the money in hand?
Because I think we need to try and eliminate as many middle steps as possible, you know, like, they should, if we've approved the effort, then they should figure out the rest of the legwork and say, okay, here's, here's what it is, and then we have more information to work with.
I think, I think probably handing people a checklist or something similar would be the best way to go forward, so.
I know, we're still, we're still.
Yeah, it's.
Working on the exact process, I think this has been, every time we come up with something, it's like, no way, that's not going to work, you know, and, or we, you know, we try to go through the process, and it's like, well, that was just, that was too many steps, or some, or, you know, you know, we're taking the feedback from the PTOs that, well, that's just too much, and that's, or that's confusing, you know, or can you just give me, like, the steps?
Well, I mean, we need input from principals too, which, you know, everybody's super busy right now, but.
And I think there's a mishmash too, right, like, we can kind of check off the low-hanging fruit, like a massive, you know, capital project is very different from like accepting, you know, a donation for a smaller item.
Well, I think even these two projects are different, because with Mr. Olson, I think it's just the swing, right, the handicap swing, and he told us when we approved fundraising that he was already in coordination with Mr. Riccardi, and he knew it was coming up this summer, and it was pretty much changing the swing structure and now much. Where the Cleveland project is a multi-phase project, I believe, as Hutchins said, over two years. So the first step is whatever money they donate it, going into being able to take down the current structure, that's in front of the school. So that's what I'm anticipating would come back to us for approval. But then, when they get to their next step of raising money next year and start to build, they would have to come back again.
To donate, because at this point, we know what their fundraising strategy is.
But we have to accept the money.
Accepting them, exactly, before the structure is built.
Or do anything with it.
Exactly, yep.
And to be clear, the money is expended by.
So it comes to you as a donation, right?
And they tell you.
My, if they, you're accepting the idea that they want to fundraise for a playground, wouldn't Paul, Riccardi, and the school be designing the playground? It's just they're donating the money for the playground, is that what you're asking me?
Well, that was part of what we had said about the sensory area, so when they came in January, I think it was, Mr. Olson wasn't a different starting point than Ms. Hutchins. So I am thinking.
You're talking about the big one, right?
So like the Cleveland, there's a small playground right now in the front, you know, where you drop your kids off, and it's not really utilized, so they're taking it down, and they're turning that area into some type of sensory activity. We haven't been told what they were trying to do, I hope they're working with Mr. Riccardi, but I do think these two projects, probably going to be a little live and learn here, right, and help us figure it out, because they are very different in where they started and where they're going.
That's kind of where I was going with it, like, we're kind of writing the rules as we.
The money should come in as a donation, and then that's where the PTOs, I think that's where it ends with the PTO. Once they donate the money, then it becomes the school's responsibility to.
So I can tell you that they're going to be concerned, because of the way things have always been done, that they then, that it's not going to be used, we just need to assure and reiterate that it will only, can only be used for the intended project, which we voted for and approved.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's had, it's a restricted donation.
Exactly, it's a restricted donation.
The law doesn't allow you to use.
It's not like you're going to take the money and run, it is only intended for the purpose for which they raised it. And so you would then issue that payment to whatever contracted employee, sorry, contractor was established through the facilities department, so if they have, can provide that information, it will expedite that process, right?
Right, but any, any donation that has a restricted. Right, but any, any donation that has a restrict, restriction, even if it's not the PTO, can only be used for that restriction.
Right, so it's, comes off of their books, it's, once it's a donation to the district.
And we can, and we can totally talk about that more offline, like, one-on-one, and that's not something that's, like, as a sub.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll have to, and we were. The checklist template is on my list as well, too, so.
Yeah. Okay, uh, anything else on long-term agenda?
Okay, um, moving on to the next item, policy. So, policies, subcommittee update, Kate will give that. Yes, thank you. Sorry, just let me pull my notes up. So we met up very briefly on the first and, um, decided to adjourn and meet on the sixth when we had all the information we needed for the handbook that we reviewed for today. And, um, we talked about that and the questions that had come up, so that's resolved. There was a question about the memorial, our memorial policy, and based on what MASC had responded with, that it really varies district by district, um, depending upon sort of district culture and different variables, um, as to what language. But I would recommend, and I said this to the committee, that we just leave our language as is with, with possibly, and this was based on feedback I got after the meeting, but with possibly adding something about a, um, a waiting period. Could be worth some discussion, um, because we, you just, you don't want to, um, you, the trick is always have, making sure people understand the policy and know the policy before they start a project, right? So that's kind of where that stood. Dr. Taylor is steady working on the MASC updates, comparing what was changed, taking out what had, you know, what's no longer recommended, comparing it to what we had already, you guys had already done in the last, um, very recent past. And just to, back to what we were just talking about a little bit, Dr. Thompson is still getting input from the principals for this template. I had offered a template of what we, uh, sort of a guide rails, this document that will serve as guide rails for the PTOs, but also maybe a checklist, but is meant to be a sheet, a form that they can fill out at the beginning of the year to talk about what their intentions and plans are for the year, that can be submitted through the principal. That's why we need them to be, everybody to be on the same page. And then, that's, so, so we're just waiting on that to be done. But I noticed, um, for the long-term agenda, it said KCD vote, and I'm wondering if that's the, the sort of circling back of that template, that we wanna vote on that. And, Dr. Thompson, you had said like July for this template, but I'm wondering, do you, is it feasible to have something more solid and ready to go by June twenty-first, our next meeting? Or should we just push that off the, to July?
Yeah, I think, I, I think July's a little more, I mean, we can look at it.
Okay.
I have, there's, there's a pile of things that have piled up, Sharice has been sick this entire week.
Yeah, I know, just.
I did see that as well, and I was like, hmm.
So, I, I just need, I, I, I just wanna look back to the PTOs with something, especially since they're gonna be turning over soon.
I don't. Yeah.
I'll just give them, I'll, I'll send an email to you to see if it makes sense, but just to let them know where things are at, reflect some of the conversation we just had.
Right, and even if we come up with something, we'd like to review it with the principals, but that's, it's crazy time, so.
Yeah, and it might actually be a good thing to have that ready for the turnover, like, it might, but, but I, I agree with you, like, letting them know where we are in the process to, to inform the people, you know, people who will be taking over, is a, a good idea. But I think, like, yeah, I don't, I don't.
I, I, absolutely, I think the, yeah, I think that, that's the issue, I can just email the list I currently have. Sorry, just to clarify, Dave, we, we certainly need input from the principals before we give a template to the PTOs. You just said, were, them, or, just, were you saying they may or may not review it, or?
No, no, well, I don't think between now and the end of school is the time to ask.
Got it.
And Sharice actually just commented that unfortunately, she would not be ready.
Fair enough, fair enough. Just checking, so we can move that off of that for next week, next time.
Do you have samples of that from other districts already?
No.
No, I just kinda put together a really, um, I think I copied you on it, but if not, I'll send it to you. It's just to, to get started, the idea of, um, a template of what people are forecasting for the year, and doing how the, the check-in process will go through the principal to us for approval, and then, like, as we're talking about what those check-in points again are, and.
Cause I can try to see from a couple of business managers or friends, if there's any that they've already done.
That'd be great, yeah.
And then you don't have to recreate the wheel.
Yeah, that would be helpful. If you can give something like that, then give it to Sharice, I'd have.
Oh, yeah, and I'd love to see it too, just, and then, um, just for my identification, since I'm looking at it, but, yeah, we definitely, I think that your, your, all the contact information, you know, yours is on there and all of that stuff, so.
Okay.
I think that horse is dead.
If I, just briefly, um, you may wanna bring this up at strategic planning on Tuesday, because the objective that was tied into KCD was taken off the strategic plan, because in that last meeting we had, people were under the assumption it was completely done. I don't know if the principals realize this is, this, there, this additional step. And I'm not saying it has to go back on the strategic plan, but it may be helpful just to say to the room of everybody on Tuesday, we are gonna need your feedback on this piece.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's gonna be resolved really soon, I don't think it needs to go back on the strategic.
Yeah, we've got, we've got our administrative meeting next, next Wednesday, too.
Okay.
Give me a heads up.
And, and a wrap-up on the twenty-second, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, if they have something to respond to, that's probably helpful, too, okay.
And just something the sub, the policy committee should be aware of, the elementary handbook should be done that, lit, this week. Uh, and I've asked the elementary principals to give us a couple of dates and times when they could meet with us to talk about the handbook, so that will be at some point next week.
Um, we can get that quickie posted.
Yeah, cause we can use that date for our next meeting, for sure. Sorry. PTO, so we talked a little bit about our priorities document, and that would, was shared with Joan and Teresa for aligning our goals. And that seems to be, that's an in-process discussion, I feel like. And so as the goals discussion comes up, I think we can nail that down. We, we talked a lot about engagement, um, and I don't know when it makes sense to have a, oh, whole, uh, uh, excuse me, a full committee discussion about that, and maybe it makes more sense when we're talking about goals in general. But we, we did sort of brainstorm around some low-hanging fruit in ways that we could potentially use social media and parent square, um, to educate around policy that don't involve, I think I'm gonna sneeze. Um, I'm sorry, excuse me. That don't involve putting a big load, an extra workload on both, um, school committee members by creating a whole nother subcommittee that we don't necessarily have the bandwidth for, um, or the admin. So looking at ways to, um, extend engagement, it's already been improved a bunch this year, but there are potentially some other small things that we could do. We talked about the, um, student, um, the student, uh, advisory council. And a lot of what came up sort of at the end is kinda where we landed. We need to look at, it looks like next year is pretty well set, but we looked at, um, potentially for the year after, creating a, an additional couns, council position to create more student opportunity, but also to resolve the issue around having an advisor, not having an advisor, cause we are struggling to find an advisor. And I think where we landed on that, um, is that we need to reengage with Hugh around that, so, um, just to see.
And the council and the students, just to.
Well, sure, I mean, an ongoing conversation, but it feels like next year, it's kind of underway, so I'm not sure how we're going to.
I think, yeah, next year is.
Yeah, you need to have a plan, plan by March, if we're gonna, if there's any sort of adjustments.
But it, it did make sense when we were talking about it to, you know, maybe add an additional position, because it, even the vice presidents, you know, don't necessarily have the bandwidth with all the other things that they have to do in, in that position. And then it would also increase the number of students that could be involved in student council, just give a little more. Cause, uh, one of the things that came up was, like, the, the kids who, who, um, apply to do Student Government Day aren't any of the student council members. They're the ones who wanna, who come, who apply to be the superintendent and the school committee members, like, so there's definitely some interest
Right.
in this, in the, um, student body, you know, outside of the people who wanna be president of the class, to be involved with the student committee.
Well, and, I mean, if someone wanted to do more than one role, they could, but it could be another opportunity for kids, I mean, who knows?
Yeah, yeah, just, it was just an option, it was something that we talked about early too, when we first started this.
Yeah, and in the meantime, I think the, so the, the question, standing question is about the advisor, and so we need to understand for next year how it's, how it's gonna work, because I think the stipend conversation is not gonna happen in time for next year, correct?
No, it's happening tonight in executive session.
Well, no.
No, it is, it's on the agenda, and so is material, so we can't talk about it here, but we will be.
But, but there's some things to be, okay.
It's an executive session topic.
I didn't think it would be resolved, quite, the timeline wouldn't match up, but maybe I'm wrong, okay.
I just can't say what I wanna say until we get to executive session.
Um, so.
TBD.
TBD. Uh, we talked a little bit about creating, how policy updates are disseminated, since we, we are getting on a regular cycle of bi-annual policy check-ins, um, that when things, um, happen on our end or at that state level, how is that disseminated to, to admin? And we talked a little bit about, in addition to your meetings where you give announcements, that there might be sort of cheat sheets available, um, so that folks are aware in, in amongst their busy, 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 um, lives, what policies are relevant and they should focus on. Uh, I don't think there's really much else of note, um, talked about engagement. Talked about we should be emphasizing accomplishments, it's a balancing game of having efficient business meetings and, um, using these meetings as, you know, to be an engagement opportunity, um, to let people know how great, the great things going on in the district. So that will continue to be something that we have to balance and, um, can do. All right, that's it for me, you guys, does anybody have any questions? Uh, we, we are waiting to see when our next date will be based on the handbooks and, because we had to get off the phone very quickly today, so, or yesterday. Any questions?
No, thank you, Kate, just, you mentioned the goal, um, work that Joan and I are gonna do. So just so everyone knows, Joan and I are meeting as the goal subcommittee on Friday morning at ten AM. So I have access to your document, but if there was anything else that you wanted us to have for policy, or David, if there's anything that you were thinking, or Anne Marie, in addition to all the budget stuff we already talked about, just get it to Joan and I over the next, you know, thirty-six hours.
You said Friday at noon.
Friday at ten, yeah, and then, I don't, I don't know if we'll be ready to like vote on something on June twenty-first, I think it might just be the first discussion with what we put together, and then probably vote over the summer.
Finish it over the summer.
Yeah.
Makes sense. You do know my summer school committee to-do list is very long already, but yes.
Well, we wouldn't want you to get bored on the beach.
Don't let her fool you, we'll be wrestling to the death at Parks at ten AM on Friday. We'll be ready.
We can't go to Parks, it's an open meeting, we're meeting remotely.
We'll be wrestling to the death remotely.
Well, I have a client at eleven-thirty, so he can wrestle me from ten to eleven-thirty, then I gotta go do my real job.
All right, I think we're set for policy, thanks, Anne Marie.
All right, um, next agenda item, legislative advocacy.
Yeah, so a quick update, so Jody Smith and I met with Representative Rogers on June first. Um, and as everybody knows, we've sent him two letters so far, so we just went through those two letters. One was on all funding pieces, one was on the Thrive Act. Overall, I think it was a very productive, positive meeting. Representative Rogers had a lot of very positive things to say about our teachers, about our district, about the work that we all are collectively doing. I think he was supportive of everything that we asked him to advocate for. He had mentioned that the House, Senate, and Governor's budgets are on the same page with the Chapter seventy percent increase, and Norwood can expect an increase of twenty-eight point eight percent for FY twenty-four in Chapter seventy. He also said that everybody, House, Senate, and Governor, um, remains fully committed to full funding of the Student Opportunity Act, and that the remainder of the seven years of the SOA will be rolled out appropriately. So that is good news. We did spend some time talking about Chapter seventy and the Student Opportunities Act and the legislative intent of Chapter seventy. So Representative Rogers shared that his understanding of the law is that the legislative intent is that all of Chapter seventy goes to schools. He referenced Section three of the Annual Appropriation Act. He said that it was a legislative intent to separate out Chapter seventy from the UGGA. The UGGA is the Unrestricted General Government Aid, and that is why it's not all lumped into one, that there's the school funding and then the other funding. He also shared with us that although some districts and towns have agreements about a certain percentage of Chapter seventy going to the municipality, that there's no legislative requirement to do that. We talked about, again, our funding letters, we had asked him to support the House Docket fourteen nineteen, uh, which concerns the Special Education Reserve Funds. This has now become a bill, so House Bill, uh, twenty-seventy-five, um, that Representative Rogers is a co-sponsor of. So what that bill, um, is asking for, which is what we asked him to advocate for, is that instead of only two percent of your net school spending being allowed in a special education reserve fund, that it be increased to five percent. So again, this won't cost anybody more money, but it'll just allow us to manage money in a more thoughtful and, and long-term way. He invited Ms. Smith and I to come testify, um, so he's gonna let us know when that date is. We will certainly let others know and possibly go and testify on that bill. We asked him to support House Docket thirty-one seventy. This was in regards to Special Education Circuit Breaker. He said he did recently speak with the Senate Chair, um, he's gonna continue conversations, letting us know if an opportunity to testify comes up about that. But again, what this one was focused on is lowering the threshold from four percent of per pupil cost down to three percent. That way, circuit breaker money kicks in sooner. He said that this is something that he's been supportive of, he's always been supportive of circuit breaker. He was also supportive of advocating that circuit breaker can increase to ninety percent reimbursement instead of seventy-five. He will continue to advocate, um, there's no bill right now, but he will talk and continue to advocate around that school districts should be able to fully retain Medicaid revenues and reimbursement. We had a really good conversation around the change in demographics in Norwood. Jody and I shared a little bit more about like our high-needs populations, what we're experiencing in the school districts, some of the issues that Lisa brought up around the scatter shelter and increase of homeless students, we shared with him, so he would be aware of what is going on in Norwood. Ms. Smith asked about the fair share amendment, um, and Representative Rogers stated that the money is not in yet. He didn't tell us when it would be. He, he just said not yet, um, but he did say that, um, we can expect that once the money is in, it'll be a fifty-fifty split between transportation and education. He does anticipate that the transportation will all go towards the MBTA, which can't say I fault that use of money. Maybe I would actually take it. But that he is not yet, he does not yet know where the, um, exactly which aspect of education it will fund, but fifty percent of the fair share amendment will come towards education in some capacity. He mentioned that in the House budget, the McKinney-Vento was fully funded, so hopefully as the budget continues to be worked on, um, that remains. We discussed the challenges of transportation and with the T and Vans, that way he can advocate for us there. Then we started to talk a little bit about the Dressing Barriers to Care Mental Health Act and thirty-seven H and three fourths. Now, we as a school committee and union have not written a letter on this yet, so Jody and I made it very clear that at this point in the meeting, I was speaking as me, she was speaking as her, we were not speaking on behalf of all of you. But we did have a candid discussion again of some of the challenges that we are seeing in the district. And I told Representative Rogers that essentially thirty-seven H and three fourths has become an unfunded mandate, and I asked him what he was gonna do about that. So, he did mention, um, that there is currently some money in the State Reserve that came from ARBA that has to be spent, or it will be returned to the federal government. So he is gonna talk to Senator Rush, he's going to get back to Ms. Smith and I, but he is going to help get us some money for our schools that can be solely focused on getting in the mental health support and the behavioral support that we now need as mandated by law. So we will report back to you on that. He also was talking about the inflation cap of Chapter seventy, um, there's a House bill. I think I wrote this number down wrong, so I'm gonna have to get back to you, cause I couldn't find it when I went online. But there is a bill on inflation cap of Chapter seventy. Apparently, in two thousand seven, two thousand nine, there was some formula that didn't account for inflation, and he's still trying to get retrospect funding from oh-seven, oh-nine. But then also moving forward, um. Um, but then also moving forward, um, it would get rid of the inflation cap. So, again, another way that chapter seventy more accurately, um, accounts for what's going on in the world. Um, we discussed our letter on the Thrive Act. At this point, I handed it over to Ms. Smith, who did a phenomenal job explaining all the challenges with MCAS and why we wrote the letter on the Thrive Act. Um, Representative Rogers said he has previously tried to get the graduation requirement of MCAS to go away, so he will continue that advocacy and those discussions. Um, and then lastly, um, he had mentioned the MSBA funding. So, I think we talked about before, the state did pass additional money going towards new building projects. Um, but he is still trying to get more money for our building project, um, so projects who are in the process of being built and have been hit by inflation.
Yeah, there's, I just wanted to, I actually wrote myself just a note for that, because I, I have a friend who's on a school committee in a different district in the North Shore.
Yeah.
And I think there's some conflicting information, because he was, he was arguing with me, saying, no, there is money for existing projects.
It's only for our new ones.
No, he kept saying existing projects. Yeah, no, we're in our third year, and we're, and I'm like, what? And I was like, no, it's new. No, it's existing, and so I wonder if there's just conflicting information out there.
I mean, I can ask, and I can look, but what I've read was that it's for new projects.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah.
But, uh, maybe worth one more.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely find out.
Is this the funding you thought was going to come through because of inflation and?
It was what I was advocating for, yeah, and then the state did act, but only for new projects, not for current. So, currently, in the House budget, they are trying to get three hundred million for projects in process. In the Senate budget, it has been reduced to a hundred million, but now they go to conference committees, so they have to argue it out and advocate, and then he'll get back to us. Um, he did ask and suggest that, um, we need, again, that it can be any of us in the school committee and the union, um, at the end of June, so he has time to work on this, get back to us, um, then he also wants to pull Senator, uh, Rush into our meeting as well. So, that is our update.
Teresa, the ARPA funding that he was talking about, was that the town's ARPA funding?
It was at the state level. It's in the reserve fund at the state level. They haven't yet allocated it, so he was going to try to get some of it for us.
Cause, uh, didn't the ARPA funding go to the town previously?
Yes, but he, he would try to earmark it for the schools.
Get some for the schools, okay.
Right, schools got S R, towns got ARPA.
Right.
Hopefully, Ms. Smith, you agree with my recap. Jody, you agree with my recap?
Yes.
Awesome.
She nodded off it.
Um, any questions for Teresa? Um, I just want to thank you both for meeting, um, with Representative Rogers and representing us and trying to get some more money for the district, because we sorely need it.
Maybe you could advocate next time for any sort of guidance on rules and laws that disproportionately affect the more diverse and larger s- school districts when the agency that is tasked with overseeing that had no idea and still has no idea how to enforce those rules, so.
Listen, in case you forgot, I spent my whole time as chair hounding Desi, so if you want me to write letters or call people, give me your list. I'll make it happen.
She has no fear.
I don't. I will talk to anybody and tell them why they need to revisit their decisions.
Maybe if they talked to educational professionals, we wouldn't be in the place that we're in with thirty-seven H and three-quarters, but I'm sorry.
Nope.
David, digress. Um, okay, all right, so moving on, um, to our next items, uh, under new business, um, we have, uh, we need to vote on a tech board representative.
Yep, so we need to do that yearly, uh, for the past two, three years. Uh, I have done it. It could be the superintendent or, or the school committee member. Uh, the meetings tend to be Friday mornings, nine o'clock, eight, nine, nine o'clock, eight-thirty, something like that. Uh, they have been virtual the last year. I don't know if that will change. There was a new executive director coming on before that. They were at tech in Walpole, um, so, but I am willing to do it again unless there's a member who wants to do it.
Does any member have a burning desire to?
I think you're in your fourth year. It's been a while since I was a school committee member.
Okay.
I think the nine AMs Friday is what just, we all go, ah.
I, I can't do that.
I know, I have, I have a standing meeting at work at that time.
Yeah, it's about, it's about sixty percent supers and thirty percent school committees.
I'll make a motion to approve that Dr. Thompson should continue as our tech board representative in Norwood.
Second.
Second, David. Hey, roll call, Joan.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
IMES as well, five to zero. Welcome back, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, thank you. It was a short trip. All right, so next on the a- agenda is, uh, well, I thought it was me, it says you.
Well, you can please take it away.
So, it's, um, yeah, so Union Fifty, which is our fair professionals union, uh, would like to offer a scholarship starting this next year for the twenty-twenty-three school year, uh, for two academic scholarships of a thousand dollars per student, so the school committee needs to accept, uh, the scholarship, and then I think they have a donation towards it as well, towards the bottom of it.
Yeah, I was wondering why, I was like, I know we had talked about this, and then I'm like, it's in two places. Are we doing that, is that correct? So, we're asking to, then, so in this case, we're asking to approve giving out the scholarship, and then the next will be to approve the actual donation, correct?
Donation, yes, yep. Move to approve the two scholarships.
Second. I'll say Kate, seconded by Kate. Um, so, roll call, Joan.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
David.
Yeah.
IMES as well, so five to zero.
All right, so the next thing is that Unit Fifty has a donation of two hundred thousand, a hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, the model was looking for.
Two one thousand, Terri-, uh, yeah, Teresa's going to kill me. Uh, two one thousand, uh, scholarships for a grand total of two thousand dollars.
That was, any questions?
Question to approve, or accept.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
I was like, fight over it, guys. Second, David, roll call, Joan.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Sorry, I couldn't get Kate out of my mouth. David.
Yes.
And IMES as well, so that passes five to zero, and thank you very much, Union Fifty, that is a wonderful, um, token, uh, not token, like I, um, you know.
Donation.
Yeah.
Gift.
Uh, yep.
Scholarship. All of you both.
My, my English just failed me right there. Okay, um, so, that brings us to school committee addenda. Um, I will start on the screen. Joan, do you have anything tonight?
I have no addenda this evening, other than congratulations to the seniors.
Thank you. Teresa?
Yeah, also congratulations to the class of twenty-twenty-three, um, and then just very briefly, um, I like the appearance portion of our meetings. Um, it, it, I know it takes a while, um, but it, it gives us a chance to really acknowledge and appreciate, um, you know, all that is good. And it is just, if people really take the time to listen to what people are telling us in the appearance, it's our budget in action, it's our policy in action, it's our support in action. Um, and hearing directly from our students, as I said earlier, so very important. Um, and I love hearing from Mr. Longley and Mr. Kerr, and, um, it's important to hear from Lisa and Lori, and to just continue to celebrate and also figure out ways to support our student body.
Thank you. Kate, do you have anything this evening?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
David?
Um, just to reiterate, uh, what the, my fellow board members have said, I wanted to congratulate the, uh, students as well as the, uh, families of the class of twenty-twenty-three. I had the opportunity just to sit in, and then to Dr. Gallagher and his staff. Um, record-breaking in terms of the efficiency, uh, of that ceremony, so, uh, a shout-out to them, and I hope that they enjoy that, celebrate it, all of those things. Um, the second thing I wanted to say is, uh, obviously about our, um, public comment, you know, as we go through and we construct this new building, um, uh, you know, part of the policy of the school committee is engagement, and, um, you know, obviously, as it was spoken about, um, you know, with the name, to see all of those people here expressing their views, um, you know, and sharing information with us, I think that is sort of the, not that is sort of the goal, that is the goal, um, of that policy. You know, it doesn't necessarily mean the name is going to change, but it's to solicit feedback, a- and I think it's really just the opening of a conversation as we go on on the next couple of months too, so, to those that reached out, we appreciate that, to those that, uh, showed up and, um, spoke, uh, you were eloquent, and we appreciate your, uh, feedback and your engagement with us, and we look forward to continuing engaging with you as we go through, uh, the rest of this process.
Thank you. Um, you kind of started it. I just wanted to say, I actually, you know, it would be surprising for some people to hear, but I wanted to thank the, um, people who came out for public comment today. Um, it can be defeating as a school committee member to see things that are on, uh, social media, day in and day out. Um, especially as we've said a gazillion times, you know, it's a, it's a volunteer, volunteer, it's an elective position, we know it's elected, um, but it's unpaid, let's go with that. Um, it is a lot of hours, it's a lot of work, um, and so it can get really frustrating, um, but we understand that that's, you know, what happens when things are out in the public, um, without all of the details. And I will leave that at that, but I wanted to thank the people who came and spoke at public forum, because to actually come and speak to the elected officials who are, who are making decisions that you may be unhappy about, that's the civic process at work. Um, and that is what this public forum is supposed to be for. I will remind everybody in the public that we're the only elected body left that has a public forum. Um, we're not required to have it, you know, at all, but we feel like it, we have felt it's important to leave, um, as part of our agenda. Um, and that, that, yeah, there are no other elected boards left, um, in the town that have that opportunity to come and just have your three minutes to speak face-to-face to the people, um, who are doing things that maybe you do like and maybe you don't. Um, I do, I thank the, the members who came today. They were very respectful, um, concise, followed the protocol, followed the policy, and I really do really appreciate that, and it just makes me actually feel good, um, as a school committee member, that, you know, there are, we can have civil discourse, um, appropriately. Um, so, that is it. Um, and congrats to the class of twenty-twenty-three, because everybody else had that, and I got to make sure that I, that I say that as well. Um, congratulations for getting through and for getting through graduation without getting rained on.
Yeah, it was a two.
Um, okay, so, with that, um, we have come to the end of our public meeting. We do unfortunately need to go into executive session, uh, for the purpose of contract negotiation discussions. Um, we will only reconvene for the purpose of adjournment. I do need a motion to go into executive session. Moved by David, seconded by Teresa. Roll call, Joan.
Yes.
I was going to say, that's a no.
So on the trigger finger at the end.
Teresa.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
IMES as well. Thank you very much for joining us this evening, and we will see you back in this room on June twenty-first at seven PM, um, for our last school year meeting, last meeting of F, of twenty, FY twenty-three.
Yep.